Good evening. The special meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. We will now take a moment for silent prayer or meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Williams.
Ready? Again, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulina, can you please call roll?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioner Williams, President, Commissioner Guiterres.
Here.
Commissioner Heng, Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Chair Brussera.
We don't have any minutes to approve on this agenda, so we will move to the continued public hearing. This is a public hearing continued from September 28, 2021, from our regular meeting. Paulina, who will represent the staff report?
Madam Chair, Joyce, our planning consultant, will present the staff report.
Good evening, Chair Brussera, members of the Planning Commission. The plan is I'm going to just do a real brief overview for the, any new public members that were here that did not hear the presentation last time, and then your, the city traffic engineer, Jana Robbins, will do a presentation on traffic, and then, of course, the applicant is here with their PowerPoint as requested by the Planning Commission to address some of the questions that came up at your last meeting. So with that, the item before you is a request for an Amazon parcel delivery station. The permits related to the requests are a precise plan, a tree removal permit, a general plan amendment, a zone change, a tentative parcel map, and a development agreement. This one, yep? All right. This is a, just an overview of the project. The parcel delivery station is proposed in the existing building that was used by Faith Community Church, address of 1211 West, or East Badio, and it is, the site will be rehabbed, including the new building, or the existing building, there will be no new construction. So the existing building will be modernized and remodeled, and then the surrounding parking lot will be upgraded to accommodate the parcel delivery station. There are 811 parking spaces throughout the site, 185 of them are passenger vehicles. Those are, for the most part, the employees. There are, the employees will park generally in two locations. The first would be this parking, this parking lot to, directly to the west of the building. That's the employees that will work inside the building. They will be the ones working the late night shift, basically sorting the parcels and getting the station ready for the vans the next day. And again, that is in this area here, and then when the van drivers arrive in their personal vehicle, they will park in this parking lot in the southwest corner. And then the rest of the parking is for the vans that are stored there. When the drivers arrive for their shift, they will park their vehicle and then walk over to their van and then move the van into what's called a staging area, and that's this area directly east of the building. So the vans will stage there and then enter the building on the south through overhead doors. Once they enter the building, they will be, that's where they will be loaded, and then they will exit the site out through a new driveway on San Bernardino Road. Along with the other improvements, the applicant is proposing a new traffic signal, and that will be on San Bernardino Road at Cutter Way, and the existing driveway inside the site will be moved to the east to line up with Cutter Way, and that is the route that the trucks will take, and those are the tractor-trailer trucks. There's 14 of those generally. Most of them arrive at night after the rush hour traffic and the rest during the day. When they arrive, they will use San Bernardino Road because it is a truck route. They will head eastbound on Azusa and then at the light turn left into the facility and come down here to the loading dock area. In addition to improvements to the building, the landscaping will be upgraded, new trees will be added. There'll be a total of 230 trees, both existing and the new trees, and the six-foot-wide planter that exists out there now on the east property line that abuts the Lark Ellen residential community will remain. That is a code requirement to separate residential from commercial or industrial. In terms of walls and fencing, the employee parking lot in which, on the east side, or I'm sorry, the west side of the building, that will be fenced, and that's because that's for security purposes, because that's where the employees that work late at night to separate the packages will park. Also, there will be two 12-foot walls, and those will basically be around the loading dock to prevent the noise from the trucks and the loading dock area. And that you see, that you see over here, the gray line, that's about a little over 500 square foot, 12-foot-high wall to the south, and then to the north, there will be also a 12-foot wall. Since the Planning Commission had your last meeting on the 28th, the applicant has been working with the Lark Ellen community, representatives of the Lark Ellen community, and they have agreed to install a 12-foot wall along the west property line, right here. And so I'll talk a little bit about that when I get to the development agreement, but that was something the applicant has agreed to do. Conceptual rendering, this shows a view. The parking that you see closest is the employee parking lot I was speaking of. You see the trucks there in the back, and this is San Bernardino Road over here, and then the vans, when they leave, will exit out of this new driveway onto the street, onto San Bernardino. This is a southwest perspective. This is, well, is a good view of the loading dock area and the proposed 12-foot wall to screen the loading dock area. And this is a southeast perspective, and with this one, you can see where the vans, once the drivers go over to park in the staging area, that's where they will stage here, and then they will come around to the south side of the building and go through this overhead door, enter the facility, load their vehicles, and then out through to San Bernardino Road. I'm only going to touch on the development agreement tonight. If the Planning Commission wants me to talk about any of the other permits, I'll be happy to do it, but the development agreement is the only permit where changes have been made. And so the slide that you have in front of you now is a slide that you saw at your last meeting. Again, I will go over the points of this slide for the benefit of the public members that weren't here at your last meeting. But the applicant has agreed to pay $4 million in total sales tax fee to the city over a period of time. There will also be conditions of approval added to the development agreement, and the reason they will be in the development agreement is that there is no use permit associated with the project, so the conditions will be in the development agreement. So the conditions are that there will be an annual driveway count to monitor the number of vehicles, and this is to keep track of the number of vehicles entering and leaving the site to ensure that it doesn't exceed what was studied in the CEQA document. The applicant has agreed to maintain a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week complaint hotline that people can call, backup alarms. Backup alarms are utilized both in the long-haul trucks or the tractor-trailer trucks and the vans. So if the, the noise study determined that that would not be a significant impact, however, if they, if the backup alarms do cause any type of issue and exceed what's allowed or what's required by OSHA, then the applicant will work with the city to perhaps do some operational changes to minimize the backup sound from the backup alarms. There is a left-turn pocket in San Bernardino Road, and that will be added at the same time as the traffic signal. So when the traffic signal goes in, the left-turn pocket will go in. I forgot to mention in the last slide that when that occurs, the road will need to be, the parking spaces directly in front of the facility on-street will be removed in order to accommodate that left-turn lane. But what the development agreement requires is that there be more, no more than one truck in that left-turn lane at any one time, and that's to prevent a situation where a truck may need to stop in the middle of San Bernardino Road in the traffic lane, or their van, or I'm sorry, their truck is, sticks like halfway out into the traffic lane. There is no, there will be no public pickup of the packages allowed at the site, and then all individual consultants, contractors, and self-employed drivers has to, have to maintain a West Covina business license, and the applicant has agreed in good faith to purchase supplies and services from the city of West Covina-based businesses and request that their consultants and contractors do the same. These are the new conditions that have been worked out between the applicant and the Lark Ellen representatives, and this is the 12-foot-high masonry wall along the east property line that I mentioned before. The exact length of that and how far that goes would have to be approved by the city's traffic engineer to make sure there's a line of sight, there's no line-of-sight issues for vehicles exiting the site. All of the landscaping that will be removed has to be placed back so that there'll be landscaping around the, around the wall, and the removal would maybe necessary when they do the construction of the new wall and tear down the other wall. The lighting out there has to be consistent with what there is out there now, and so for a length of the east property line, as you look from San Bernardino back south, all of the light standards out there are, the ones that directly abut that property line are shorter than all of the light standards in the parking lot. And so Lark Ellen would like to keep that height and also to keep the brightness, and that is something the applicant had proposed anyway. The code requires a maximum of .5-foot candles at the property line, so, and they accommodate that through house shields on those that are around the perimeter, and it prevents the light from spilling back onto the property. Another condition is to prohibit smoking and playing music with windows open within 50 feet of the property line, as the applicant has agreed to this condition, and no speakers or megaphones used on the exterior. And the employee incentives to subsidize alternative transportation expenses, like taking a bus instead of driving your car, that is actually already in the mitigated NIGDEC, so they would have had to do that anyway to comply with the mitigated NIGDEC, but the Lark Ellen community felt more comfortable with it being in the development agreement, and so it's been placed in the development agreement. So these are the new proposed conditions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to your traffic consultant, Jana Robbins, and
Glasses on. Good evening, Commissioners, residents. I'm just going to go over kind of the flow of what was prepared for the traffic study. It was asked that we kind of just go over the nuts and bolts of it because it is quite lengthy and is quite significant to dig through. So the introduction, as you know, this project was required to do a traffic study. So the e-commerce, Amazon hired NV5 engineers and consultants to prepare a traffic study for their proposed project, and the final study was dated June 22, 2021. They analyzed the traffic impacts of the proposed West Covina delivery station, and the City of Covina has also reviewed the traffic impact study, and I'll get to that later. So when we do traffic studies, the both cities have traffic impact study guidelines that they need to follow. The City of West Covina in 2020 published a new traffic study guidelines because it needs to include SB 743, the vehicle miles traveled, as well as the level of service assessment. And I put up here, City of Covina also has, in July 2020, they passed, they adopted their transportation guidelines in October 2020. So the target level service for intersections at West Covina is level of service E or better. And if, if, when you add project to base conditions that increases V over C by .02 or more, then it is considered impacted, project impact. City of Covina, target level service for intersections is level service D or better, and also if the V over C increases by .02 or more as well, and then it's considered As part of their study, they looked at nine intersections as well as the seven driveways for the site. And the reason I included City of Covina is because some of the intersections were located or are located in the City of Covina. So as you see, San Bernardino Road at Cutter Way is in the City of Covina. In fact, San Bernardino Road is in the City of Covina. So the improvements that Amazon has agreed to do will have to also be approved by City of Covina when it gets into the planning stage. So the traffic signal at Cutter Way, the left-turn pockets, that type of thing, will also have to be approved by City of Covina as well as by City of West Covina. So we have San Bernardino Road. It is a minor arterial, and it is a truck route. ADT is about 16,000 vehicles per day, which is below capacity for a minor arterial, which is probably about at 30,000. Posted speed limit is 40 miles an hour. Bedillo Street in the City of West Covina is not a truck route, so that's why the trucks need to be restricted to San Bernardino Road. Classification is a principal arterial, and they have about 18,000 vehicles per day, posted speed limit 45 miles an hour. Then we have Azusa Avenue, which is a principal arterial, and that is a truck route, and it's both City of Covina as well as West Covina truck route. Speed limit is 40 miles an hour. So what they did, the NV5, they took traffic counts, and of course, we all know, it was kind of during the COVID period where traffic was not normal. So we had to look, they had to look at historic turning movement counts, and then they took counts again in 2021, and they adjusted those counts by a factor to get it back to 2021, which is a typical, what we've had to do with all the projects coming in. So next, we look at trip generation. So in this, the reason I point this out is because a little different, is normal, when we look at trip generation, we look at the peak commute hours, which is 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. But in this case, Amazon is having most of its operation off-peak hours. So to be fair, we have them also look at the peak hours of the generator. So that is 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So I have on, the table on the left shows what the peak hours, it would only have like two during the one, the a.m. peak, and after, and, and, I'm sorry, and 63 in the p.m. peak. That is the, what they call adjacent street typical peak hours. Now, if we look at the peak hours of the generator, which is when Amazon is going to be the most busy, at 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., we jump to 182 trips, and then in the p.m., 163 trips. I have this, Joyce kind of went over it. This is their site plan, so you have, it shows all the driveways. The driveway on San Bernardino Road, the one on the left, will be the signalized, and that's where the trucks will come in and the employees that work inside. The middle driveway, it's for right turn, I'm sorry, left turn exit only. So it'd be left or right exit only. There's no entering into that driveway. This is the vans that are coming out. The easternmost driveway is restricted to right turn in and right turn out. There will be no left turn out and no left turn in at this driveway. Then we jump down to the driveways on Bedillo, the one on the east, because the median is there. It is right turn in and out only as well. And then the next driveway over to it, driveway two, also has the median, so it would be limited to right in, right out as well. Driveway number three, which is this one, has a cut in the median. It has a left-turn pocket in the median, so it would allow left turn in, right turn in, of course, and then left or right out. And then the driveway to the far west also has a cut in the median, so it would allow left turn in, left turn out, and right. So some of the comments that came last time were truck routes. So truck routes, all trucks are only allowed to travel on dedicated truck routes. Now, sometimes if there's a delivery, you will see a truck, but most of the time, if they're just traveling, they need to travel only on dedicated truck routes. So in West Covina, truck routes, here's, the blue is, is the truck routes in West Covina. Azusa Avenue, north city limit to south city limit. San Bernardino Road, east city limit to west city limit. Bedillo Street is not a truck route. Lark Ellen is not a truck route. Vincent is not a truck route. Covina, we also look there because some of the streets are in Covina. Azusa Avenue is also a truck route, they're whole city limits. Now, Bedillo Street is a truck, truck route, but it's from Azusa Avenue to the east, to Grand. It does not go to the west. San Bernardino Road, west city limit to Grand Avenue, and I just include this, Workman, Citrus to Baranca is a truck route. So when we look at intersections, we look at level of service. As you've probably all heard this many times, intersections are judged A through F, similar to school, A being the best, F, close to failure, where a lot of gridlock, E, it's kind of approaching it. So when we looked at level of service, they included existing conditions, they looked at the typical peak, so they did several different iterations. So typical peak, eight to nine, four to five, is what you'd normally see on, on traffic studies. But then they also did a level service for those intersections they studied, for the peak of the development, which was 10 to 11, then they added project traffic to existing, and then they also included cumulative projects. I'm not going to go over them, but they did look at related projects, which are those projects that would reasonably assume to be add, to add traffic by the time this project would be built. So in West Covina, there was 10 projects, Covina 19 and Baldwin Park 19 project. So here's our first intersection capacity. So the no build is considered the existing. So this is the typical peak hours. They called it adjacent street peak. So I labeled it at the bottom so you kind of knew. In this case, it was 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. So if you notice all these intersections, uh, this is, so you look at no build, this is what's out there right now. So Bedillo at Azusa is a level service E in the morning, and it, in the evening, is a level service D. Build is where we add the Amazon project to it. So it, in the closest one that is the E is Bedillo at Azusa, so it stays at E and D for a.m. and p.m. Now here's where we look at the level service increase. Is this considered a significant impact? And that has to increase, as you note on my, the first slides, was .02 or more in the V over C. And so we look at Bedillo and Azusa, which is the only intersection operating at E. So the increase here is less than .02. It's .001 and .003, so it is not considered a significant impact. Then we look at Table 5B, which is the generator peak. So we also looked at no build, which is existing conditions, but you have to remember that this is 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. and 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. So these numbers are better, and the reason is because the existing traffic is not commuters. They are already at work, you've taken your kids to school, so your existing conditions, your base, is going to be less. So as this table shows, all the intersections are As and Bs. So they're, even with the addition of build, which is the Amazon project, there's no significant Then we looked at cumulative. So cumulative is all those projects, the 19 from all the other cities, they are added into the base conditions. So the NV5 report only took into consideration the typical peak because that's when most of the, the higher traffic is, the base conditions. So if you look at it with all the added projects and you add Amazon, Bedillo at Azusa is now a level service E. But then, since they do not increase by .02, it shows not significant. So none of these intersections are significant with cumulative and the project. So transportation impact, just a rerun, when is the intersection considered to be impacted by project traffic? So the target level service for intersections is, at West Covina, it's level service E or better, established by the city's general plan. Any intersection operating at level service F is considered deficient. Now, if the project-related increase is .02, then it's considered to be significantly impacted. City of Covina, city is level service D or better, and it has to be greater than .02 to be significantly impacted. So the findings of the level service analysis was a project will not impact any of the studied intersections, although Bedillo at Azusa is projected to operate at level service E under a.m. and p.m. peak conditions. The project did not increase the V over C by .02 or more. And also, they did look at, I didn't include that table, they did look at Cutter Way and the project driveway, and this is an unsignalized intersection, so because the Amazon has agreed to signalize that intersection, the operations were level service A because of the signal. Now, just, all my notes were, it was a level service D without the signal, but now it's a level service A with the signal. The signal is going to have pedestrian crossing, left-turn pockets in both directions, so that pedestrians will be able to cross as well. Next piece of every traffic study now to meet SB 743 is vehicle miles traveled. traveled. So the city of West Covina adopted criteria for evaluating vehicle miles traveled, it's for determination of traffic-related sequo impact. So the level of service that we looked at with those tables is not sequo related, it's to be in line with the general plan. The, um, the new guidelines from the state is, VMT is what's going to determine if there's sequo impact. So there's different ways that a project can screen out from preparing a VMT. It's if a project generates less than a hundred and ten daily trips, is located in a transit priority area, or is in low VMT area. So based on these guidelines, the project was not able to be screened out, so they had to do a VMT analysis. So, VMT analysis, I'm just going to go quickly kind of over it, but they're repurposing the existing church, but because the church was not, you know, during COVID, you didn't do driveway counts of the school or the church, you saw in the trip generation that normally we allow a reduction in trip generation due to removal of existing conditions, but in case, but in this case, no reduction was taken because the church was not, at least in that time, was operational, so the full trips were used. So, city of West Covina is included in the San Gabriel Valley OGG travel demand model, and they have, as part of their guidelines, a vehicle miles traveled evaluation tool. So, this is part of what they had to use. City has adopted a fifteen percent below baseline VMT per service population for all land uses. That baseline is thirty-five point oh two and the threshold fifteen percent below is twenty-nine point seven seven. So, when using the evaluation tool, the site had a thirty-one point eight, eight-two without the project, and then with, let me see, thirty-one point eight-two with the project. As a result, the proposed tenant needed to lower the VMT. So, to get their VMT to lower than the thirty-one point eight-two, I have a table here, here's the. So, what they are offering is what is in line with what CAPCOA offers for the VMT from the state. It's the California Air Pollution Control Officers Association. It's an assessment of quantifiable greenhouse gas emission reduction benefits, and so each measure provides the amount or percent of reduction that can be created to get it below the base levels, fifteen percent or low. So as a result, the proposed tenant offers all employees the following. The option of setting aside two hundred and seventy dollars per month of their before tax pay to be used to subsidize alternative transportation expenses. Preferential parking for car vamples close to the building entrance, with the number of available spaces varying by demand. In addition, as normal practice, the tenant provides kiosks, bulletin boards where transit and rideshare options are posted, provides a ride matching platform, which is ways and signs of employee transportation coordinator to encourage the use of alternative transportation options. Applications of, application of these measures qualify as TP eleven, alternative transportation benefits, and are expected to reduce the VMT per service population to twenty-nine point seven-two, which is fifteen percent below the significant threshold. So, this table is just one of the tools that they had to use, and it shows the base is thirty-five point oh two, and you subtract fifteen percent, you get the two-nine point seven-seven, which is the line on the dotted, dotted graph. So they had to be below that, so with these improvements that I read, it got down to twenty-nine point seven-two, so then they were able to reduce vehicle miles traveled and no significant impacts. And that is the end of my presentation.
Yes, that's the conclusion. Thank you. Does the commissioner at this time have any questions for staff? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Williams?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Heng?
I do have one in terms of significant impact. Significant is in terms of percentage right now. What about number of cars? What does that translate it to?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, because significant is right now, it's done in a percentage number. Is there like, can you just convert it to the number of cars?
Are we talking VMT or level of service?
Levels, significant, when you use the word significance, because the ratio comparison was in, in percentage.
Yeah, the volume to capacity, so it could range, depending on what the intersection is operating at. If an intersection is level service D to start off with, it's going to take a lot less to, to make it, to push it over the edge, I should say. So, there isn't a percentage that's for every intersection, so level service A, you might have a hundred cars, for level service F, you know, ten cars might push it over.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Lewis?
Sure, I have a number of questions. With regard to the, to the new light that's proposed at Cutter Way, with regard to the analysis that was done, what, if any, impacts does the new proposed light have on the grading system that, that you presented tonight, if built?
For that intersection?
So, so for example, if, if that light goes in, does that light have any potential downstream effects on, let's say, Vincent or Lark Ellen on San Bernardino Road or, or elsewhere?
At this point, it would not, because it's far enough away. So if it was in, you know, like five hundred feet or something, we would have to look at coordination with the signals.
Isn't, isn't it directly, isn't it like the main driveway that, that is Cutter Way? The, the new light is going to go in it?
Cutter Way is the driveway for the trucks and employees. So I'm not sure what you would consider the main driveway. Each driveway that they have is a different type of vehicle.
Right, right, that, that I understand. What I'm saying is, does, does that new light have any impacts on the grading system whatsoever?
No, I wouldn't think so, no.
And then, you, you had a, I'll, I'll ask an overall question. With regard to San Bernardino Road, what is the, what is the volume capacity on that street between Vincent and Lark Ellen? I, I understand our, our, our number for that on a, on a daily volume amount is about sixteen thousand vehicles, is that correct?
Yes, let me find my notes on that. Sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, so it's about sixteen thousand, it's a minor arterial. I mean, traffic studies, normally the signal is what defines the operation, we don't normally include capacity of roadways. I did take this information because it was something of concern from the West Covina's two thousand and seven speed survey data. So, capacity for a minor arterial is around thirty-five thousand, so you have sixteen thousand. So it would be probably level service B.
Understood. So, with, with regard to the, with regard to the proposed number of additional vehicle trips that are set forth under the proposed development agreement, my understanding it's nine hundred and thirty-four. Does that include peak season? Is that your understanding?
Did, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
What the screen is like.
No, no, no problem. So my, my question is, under the development agreement, there's, there's an indication that the total number of vehicle trips is capped at, I think, nine hundred and thirty-four vehicle trips, if memory serves me right, or nine hundred and fourteen, excuse me. The, the, the question is, does that include peak season?
No.
Okay, so what is the actual cap, then?
That should include the peak season, no? That's the maximum.
Does that not include peak season? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, that's the regular, nine hundred and fourteen daily trips is what they're assuming is going to happen on a regular basis. Peak season is usually from Thanksgiving to Christmas. And in traffic engineering, I mean, normally, we don't look at peak season because it's like Christmas shopping at the mall. If we design for peak season, then we would have asphalt pavement the rest of the ten months, so they indicated, I believe, it was like double, I mean, they would have to answer that.
Okay.
But it was.
The, the problem that I'm running into is, I, I don't know how to quantify that in terms of the impact. So if we're talking, it's nine hundred and fourteen vehicle trips, you can divide that by two, it's a fairly simple calculation in terms of how many vehicles that is. You're looking at a little more than four hundred and fifty vehicles per day. But if we're talking about a situation in which we don't know what the actual cap is even during peak season, I guess I'm, I'm kind of a little lost on that in terms of how to ask, in terms of how that's going to, to impact the, the local neighborhood. And I, I think that that's a, that's an issue that I, I, I don't know how to reconcile in terms of asking you questions about it right this second.
I think, I think there was limits on how many vans could go in and out. Is that correct, staff? There's maximum limits, right?
In the development agreement, yes.
Can you, can you elaborate on that?
Maximum limit is the same limit that was reflected on the, the traffic analysis, which is like.
So which, so if that's the maximum limit, which means no matter if it's peak season or not, there's a limit in place, right?
I don't think there's a limit in place, per se, that's what Amazon is saying, that where they're having on a daily basis is nine hundred and something car versus peak season, they may go up to double, which is close to two thousand, give or take. So there's no limit on the, is that correct, Joan?
I mean, I'm, I'm reading the agreement here, and it says, per the traffic impact, or the proposed agreement here, the, the, it says, per the traffic impact study conducted by NV5, and the initial study mitigated negative declaration document, the facility shall not generate more than nine hundred and fourteen trips per day. Six hundred and two passenger vehicles, two hundred and eighty-four delivery vans, and twenty-eight tractor-trailer trucks. I, I don't see any language that qualifies that based upon peak season, so I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, so, under that definition, that will include the peak season. There's no, because there's no, I don't think there's a.
Maybe we can ask the applicant about that, that way we can get more specificity, but with, with regard to the, one second. With regard to that, that slide that you had with all of the various driveways, it's really kind of hard to see even, even with the screen right in front of us, and so what I wanted to, to get a sense of is, how many vehicle trips you're anticipating in and out of each driveway? I guess, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to pretend I, I understand whether there's a differential between peak season or not in this, but let's say we're going with the nine fourteen number, can you sort of differentiate the, the in and out for, for each of the, I think there's seven driveways?
Let me look at the traffic study, because they do have all the figures in the traffic study.
Yeah, if I recall, there's specific hours when big rigs and certain vehicles could come in and out.
I'll let the applicant confirm, but I believe in peak seasons, they also utilize other avenues of delivery.
Okay. So am I understanding that you would like to know how many trips are coming out of each driveway?
Correct.
Okay. We have figures for trip assignment for every driveway, truck, employees. Okay, do you want to know the peak hour or the development?
We, we can go overall, let's, let's say overall for, for each driveway.
Okay. Saying, I would think the, the peak hour of the generator, because the other has like two trips, you know?
Sure.
So, if you look at, you have their traffic study, if you look at figure eighteen. All right, so driveway seven, which is the Cutter Way one. So, in the AM generator, they have one vehicle turning in and six, fifty-five going through the intersection towards Vincent. Driveway five, they have. Car, truck, let's see, they have. Six, zero cars, zero trucks, and sixty-five vans making a left. Zero cars, zero trucks, thirty-three vans making a right. Driveway five.
Can, can you, can you point those out on the map that way?
Unfortunately, it's not on my presentation, it's only on the.
I, I understand. I was going to say, you had that, you had that map slide?
Yes, okay.
I was going to say, maybe we can.
Yeah, that would probably be better.
Just for illustrative purposes.
So, this is considered driveway seven, right here. This is where the trucks and the, the regular employees are going to be utilizing it. And that was labeled on their traffic study as driveway seven. So that's where we have, in the AM, zero cars, one truck, zero cars. And then going through, which is this movement, just continuing, because they probably exited from one of these other driveways, is, uh, zero, such tiny, sorry, zero cars, zero trucks, and sixty-five vans going through. Okay, driveway five, that's this middle driveway right here. This is the van exit. So here we have. So here we have only, we have sixty-five vans making a left, forty-three vans making a right. And then one, truck continuing past to get over here into cutaway driveway. So then we have driveway number five, which is this one right here, the eastern one. Okay, in the AM, we have nobody leaving, but we have forty-three vans from here passing and continuing on towards the east. And going the other way, we have one truck going towards the truck driveway. All right, so then we go down to the Bedillo driveway, down here. They, they lumped this driveway and this drive together because it's only right in, right out. So they have twenty-nine cars passing this, and none turning in, going to the west. Then we have driveway number three, which is this one, and we have twenty-nine cars turning in at this driveway, going into the site. No trucks, no vans. And this driveway, which is driveway four, they are showing forty-four cars turning in to this driveway. No vans, no truck. So that's in the AM. Then we have the PM, which is figure nineteen, if you're following along. So we reverse it. So in the PM, which is the eight to nine, for this first driveway, driveway five, we have, um, twelve vans turning into the driveway. No trucks, no cars turning in. We have one truck passing it in the evening, going the east. Here we have one truck going past this driveway, probably to this driveway, and no vans. Then we look at the middle, middle driveway, driveway six. We have nobody exiting at that time. We have one truck going past it on San Bernardino Road to this driveway, and then coming past it on San Bernardino Road, going eastbound. We have one truck and twelve vans. So they were the twelve vans that were going in here. All right, so then we have the driveway seven, opposite cutaway. We have this time period. We have zero cars, one truck, zero vans. Coming out to go east, making a right. We have zero cars, one truck, and zero vans. And then passing this driveway, going eastbound. We have zero cars, zero trucks, and we have twelve. So they're probably the ones going into this driveway. So that, that is the project traffic.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions for us, staff. I want to thank you for your thorough reports and for addressing concerns from the previous meeting. At this time, since the public hearing was closed in the last meeting, we're gonna go ahead and open it at this time, and we'll hear from the applicant, Donald Lamb.
If you'd like to just go ahead and switch it to the first slide.
Chair, members of the commission, thank you again for allowing us to come back this evening. We know this is a great imposition on you on a Monday night to come out, but we sincerely thank you for your time. It's important to you, it's very important to us. So I am going to shorten my presentation way down. At this point, the staff has covered just about every question that was raised last time, but to try to catch a few that maybe were not mentioned this evening. Again, just by way of background, very briefly, the slide does show that this building will be completely remodeled into an Amazon delivery center, delivery station. We addressed it on San Bernardino Road, as well as the prior address of Badio, but it is addressed on San Bernardino, since that's the destination point that we want all the new mapping software to take vehicles to versus Badio, which is not a truck route. The project as proposed would generate at least two hundred and fifty or more new jobs for your community. The development agreement that staff referred to is a substantial benefit that we believe your city is in dire need of financially. The agreement is a four million dollar public benefit agreement. Two million dollars will be paid to the city, to the general fund, by the day that the delivery station would be open. The balance of two million is paid two hundred thousand per year over the following ten years. In addition to that, there is eighty thousand dollars a year of new property tax that you currently do not receive, since it is a church, it's church-owned, and a nonprofit church does not pay property tax. So after your first commitment of the two million dollars received, you'll have at least two hundred and eighty thousand a year and growing of annual rev, annual revenue. We've reviewed your city budget, discussed this with city manager Carney, and financial status of your city is something that this will greatly help you. And we're proud to help the city and do what we can in this public benefit. As part of this process, as the staff has mentioned, we do need your recommendation to the city council to change the general plan back from church to industrial, change the zoning from the community, the faith church property to M1 industrial. We have the precise plan that you've seen the plans for on the screen, and this is the rendering. And if you could switch to the next slide, please, which is the site plan. We'll just leave that up then at this point. There is a parcel map, as we mentioned before. There are two parcels here, and for technical reasons, we must combine them into one. And lastly, we're not second to last. There's a tree removal permit. Like we mentioned before, there are just three large trees at the Cutter Street entry point. It's not a significant number of trees. These are the three trees that are deemed significant by the city by your own code, because they're greater than twelve inches in diameter. And lastly, the development agreement, which we've spent weeks on negotiating and discussing with your city staff. So as of tonight, all of these actions before you have been recommended for approval by your city staff, your planning department, your community development director, who is also the assistant city manager, and your city manager. So all of your administrative staff sees the benefits in this project. All of these same staff members have reviewed all of the environmental documents that have been discussed tonight, the traffic study, the noise, the lighting, every aspect, they have reviewed after it was prepared by a consultant. It was peer-reviewed by the city's consultant, and again, reviewed by the city staff. So they've all gone through three levels of verification for accuracy. As such, at your last meeting, there were a few questions related to the environmental review, and this is again called a mitigated negative declaration, which is not an environmental impact report, because none of the studies revealed that there are any significant adverse impacts that'll be created by this project. And a good example is that, of which Jana just mentioned about traffic. When you have a project that generates traffic of less or equal to one percent increase in an intersection, that is deemed insignificant. In fact, throughout most of the cities in the Los Angeles and Orange County and this general area, if you only generate one percent increase in an intersection, it's not even deemed measurable. City of West Covina uses two percent. And if you saw just now on the screen, no intersection is increased by this project at fully operational, at peak hours, more than one percent. And as such, none of the intersections with or without this project are changed. So while it has this appearance of a lot of traffic, in reality, it isn't. It's a large piece of property, but the way that the vans and the vehicles are dispersed during off-peak traffic hours, there's minimal, next to no, impact on the community. And in a few minutes, we do have Amazon representatives tonight who will address other questions. But if I could just give a little commentary on the questions that you're having about this peak surge during the holidays. I'm not very, I don't have the thorough knowledge of it, but vision it this way. If you have during the holidays a need for more deliveries, and they need to occur, they would occur during off-peak hours, just like the normal deliveries. So even if it doubled completely, there was double the amount of traffic generated by this use, it would go in off-peak hours, and it would still not affect the intersections, because those intersections have such significant capacity. As Jana's referring to, intersections are rated in A, B, C, D, E, F. D is used throughout most counties as the maximum ideal to E. Most all of your intersections in this area are A, B, and C, which mean they have extraordinary amount of additional capacity. So if that was needed, and it's probably an undetermined need, because who knows after the COVID virus, what level of holiday surge might occur. But if it did occur, it would be in those off-peak hours. It would probably be with maybe additional personnel coming in, but not really substantially affect any of the operations' impact on the community. And I will leave it to them to answer further your questions, but that's the way in the world of traffic engineering it's viewed, that it's very hard to limit a business to an absolute when a business hasn't even opened. You can project, and you can say, this is the business's intent, and this is what we're measuring, and that's what the California Environmental Quality Act says, is give us your best intent to measure what you believe is going to occur, and that's it. Is it an absolutely perfect process? The California Environmental Quality Act is not a perfect process. It's a very subjective process. And it's mainly for your information to provide you a comfort level. And after you review that, then you make your decisions. And that's all CEQA really is about, is giving you enough information to make a decision. Is it precise? It's never truly precise, because it is a projection of the future. It's not an exact existing situation. Like to just very quickly talk again about community outreach. And again, as we mentioned last time, notices were sent out to all property owners and tenants, I won't say tenants, but apartment dwellers within three hundred feet of this project. All those written notices were mailed out for the mitigated negative declaration review, and that occurred in August. So everyone received a notice that said, if you'd like to review, and here's what's coming. They had the opportunity to go online, look at any documents they wish, and send in letters, if they wished, in favor and opposition. State agencies commented there were very, very few from any residents in the area. In addition to that, our team did a walking tour, or door-to-door along, Yuc, Yuc, Yucunia, sorry, don't have this street name. The one residential street just south of Badio, they went door-to-door on that street. There were only one or two people that seemed to have many questions at all. From there, we had a community meeting online, in which we used that same mailing list again. And that community meeting online only resulted in six people having any interest in, in viewing or being part of that. In my world, that means there wasn't a lot of serious concern, that everybody understands this is an Amazon. This is a, a business that has its act together. It runs its business based on technology. It's somebody that everybody knows will be here. They don't move in town, do something wrong and move out. The Lark Ellen Village next door had the greatest number of concerns or comments, and like to say that the applicant, Green Law Partners, has spent an expensive, extensive amount of time since your last hearing, conversing with the applicant's repres, I'm sorry, Lark Ellen Village attorney and representative next door. So I was going to explain the six operating conditions are five, but staff has already put those up on the screen. So Green Law Partners has gone forward and agreed with them. Those additional operating conditions are actually in your development agreement that you have in possession, staff has, has been signed by Green Law Partners. And it does specifically agree, for example, to a twelve-foot-high masonry sound wall between these two properties. I've never seen a twelve-foot wall ever requested by anyone. Usually, the maximum was eight, but they requested twelve. Green Law committed to it. This is more than a six hundred thousand dollar wall as part of this construction effort. But in return, we feel then it completely eliminates any potential noise impacts in the future, be it by mistake or just daily driving of those vehicles. Green Law also agreed to adjust the lighting, and I won't go through all those that you saw earlier. But with the wall in particular that the property owner had requested, the Green Law's agreed to, we're virtually in agreement on everything at this point. There's one additional condition that's still being discussed between Green Law and the property owner next door, but overall, I believe we're just about there at total agreement. So with that, there was one other question. I believe someone either stated here or by letter that they were concerned about all the parking being eliminated on Badio, on the north side. And that was a misunderstanding. It's not. On Badio, there are four driveways. The requirement says that adjacent to each of those driveways should be a red curb to allow greater visibility. So when a vehicle's turning in or turning out, you don't have cars parked right up to the edge of the drive approach. So there's not a removing of cars on Badio, automobile parking on Badio, on San Bernardino Road. The same thing, there are red spaces, or red curbing painted on each side of those driveways, again, to make it a safe entry and exit point. With that, I'm going to conclude, and we do have, we're very pleased to announce, we have representatives here tonight from Amazon Corporation. Would like to address any of your thoughts and ideas, but they have an excellent presentation to discuss benefits, their future, their ideas. I think it's very exciting. I enjoyed seeing it. So again, thank you very much. After all this, if you'd like me to come up and answer any questions, but otherwise, I think we're complete in our presentation. In conclusion, if I'm not up here, we look forward to you supporting us. We ask for your support, and we genuinely hope that you'll recommend this project to the city council. So thank you very much. So with that, either Umberto or Tim? Thank you.
Good afternoon, chair and commissioners. We have a presentation that was provided to staff. Can I get the next slide, please? So briefly, we're gonna talk a little bit about, of basically the team, our operations, some traffic mitigation. There were some questions last time about our hiring efforts, the economic development, and then also just our commitment within the community. Next slide, please. So first and foremost, like to formally introduce myself. I'm Umberto Quintana, entitlements manager with Amazon Logistics. Accompanying here is my colleague, Tim Howe. He's our Economic Development Policy Manager. Next slide, please. So I know you've, we've heard this a little bit, belabor this issue a little bit, but just want to really touch on the specifics of what we are. And basically, what we try to do is try to be as customer-centric as possible. And, and so to provide a little bit of a narrative, basically, we are the last mile of our fulfillment process. So we basically have our one-two-three thou, one-to-three million square foot facilities that house our product. We also have our sortation centers that break that down to a ZIP code level. And then we have our delivery station, which is our localized facilities that basically break that down to a route level that is to be hyper-local for the, the neighboring community and to provide that product to that specific community. Next slide, please. As here, as folks already staff and, and Don has talked about, we're basically looking to do an adaptive reuse of the building, using renderings of the site, as, as you've seen. Can I get the next slide as well? So basically, one of the things that we want to talk about a little bit is our operations, to get a better understanding of what we do. So we do run a, basically a strict twenty-four-hour clock. So we do run a, basically, a strict 24-hour clock. Right now, we're looking at about 129 associates that are going to be coming in, and we have different shift structures. So we're looking at 1:30 a.m., 5:30 a.m., and then at 1 o'clock as well. And then, looking at our line-haul truck traffic, we're looking at about 14 line-haul trucks throughout a 24-hour period. As it pertains to the delivery associates and our drivers, we're looking at starting to see those folks come in around 10 a.m. And we do this strategically, because we do want to be a good corporate steward. We shifted our clock to start basically during off-peak traffic hours. That way, so folks that are going to work, dropping their children off to school, we're not impacting that specific commute and basically starting our clock at 10 a.m. And basically, we're looking to do that specifically in routes. So basically, we're not going to have all our 142 vans go out at once, but rather, we do this in waves that are basically 20 to 30 waves, approximately 36 vans each wave. And basically, these vans, once they depart from the delivery station, they go out for a 10-hour shift and return it as such. So as logic dictates, they go out in these specific waves and return back. I do want to touch on an item that was brought up as it pertains to seasonality and things of that nature, and basically, the traffic and how do we quantify impacts related to that? So in the world of traffic analysis, the world of Sequo, what we, what the industry does is basically is an average day. Seasonality isn't taken into account for these, because these are seasonal shifts that are based on just projections that we have. So impacts related to significant, non-significant, within an MND, EIR, or what have you throughout the state of California is based on your average day. And it's my understanding that the way the language in that development agreement was worded was "average day," and maybe that's something that just needs to get clarified so that there isn't this type of confusion. Next slide. So one of the things that we want to make sure that we're good corporate stewards, and one of the things we want to make sure that we're doing things well, and as it relates to traffic mitigation, just want to make sure that our drivers are adhering to the rules and what have you. And one of the things that we do is, once the driver receives its route for the day, they have it GPS, and basically, that way, we ensure we're not cutting through residential streets unless they're delivering in that area, basically focusing on those arterials and collector streets and things of that nature, so that we are able to guide the traffic in a more orchestrated fashion. As indicated, our vans are dispatched in peaks to kind of avoid a flood of vehicles or perception of a flood of vehicles. As it pertains to our safety, our drivers go through extensive safety training to make sure that we're operating in a safe manner, both for their drivers and in the community. One of the concerns that was brought up in the last meeting was concerns over noise. And so what we want to do is just have more of a controlled trailer yard. We're not going to be using any holsters, which is the little smaller vehicles that are going to be trailering the vehicles in and out of the yard, but rather focus on that aspect. And basically, also, the line hauls are managed in a one-way-in, one-way-out, for the most part. That's how we have them coming in from our sortation centers. Obviously, there might be some overlap in anything, but as you can see, it's 14 line hauls in a 24-hour period. Also, we also have our drivers turn off their vehicles to ensure that it's not idling to address any of those concerns. Last meeting also, there was a concern about drones, a question about drones. So this facility is not equipped for that. There's no desire to go that at the moment. You know, as any business changes, things do change, but we'll come back to the community. We'll come back to the commission and say, hey, this is a change in our operations. Let's look at it, and let's decide at that point. That being said, I know there was a couple of questions regarding our employment, hiring practices, and things of that nature. I'll kick it over to my colleague, Tim Howe, and he'll answer those specific questions.
If you could please advance. So Amazon employees receive an average starting wage of $18 per hour nationally, and a minimum of $15 per hour wage. That also includes comprehensive benefits from day one for our full-time positions. That includes full medical, dental, vision, 401K, where Amazon matches up to 50%. So if you put in $2, Amazon matches with an additional dollar. Up to 20 weeks of paid parental leave, and these comprehensive benefits add an additional $3.50 on average on a national basis. Importantly, and I'll highlight this even further in a minute, is access to career choice. That is the embodiment of the pledge that Amazon has made over the last number of years to invest $1.2 billion from now through 2025 to provide upskilling opportunities for all of our U.S. hourly employees to upscale into in-demand fields. Next slide, please. In addition, our delivery associates, we utilize a program we call Delivery Service Partners, DSP. They also receive an average starting wage of $18 per hour and a minimum $15 per hour wage nationally, in addition to the benefits that I mentioned earlier. Monthly audits are conducted to ensure that our delivery service partners are maintaining their agreed-upon terms per their contracts with Amazon. And all delivery associates are subject to background checks prior to becoming an employee with a delivery service partner for Amazon. All associates go through hours of safety training and ongoing coaching, and have access to continuing education opportunities as well. Next slide, please. Going a little deeper into the DSP program, Delivery Service Partners, and really, this is an entrepreneurial opportunity for folks to start their own small business, to operate their own package-delivery business. Creates this opportunity for folks that are passionate about doing this, developing a team, starting a business. DSPs are, they have formed a robust community of business owners who help deliver the thousands of packages to customers every day. And the DSPs, the Delivery Service Partners, hire the delivery associates and helpers that facilitate the deliveries. And these delivery associates are the folks that are operating the Amazon Prime branded vans that go into your neighborhoods to deliver your package to your door. Additionally, we have a program called Amazon Flex that I believe was alluded to by one of the commissioners earlier. Community members can use their own personal vehicles to deliver packages as a way of earning extra money. With Amazon Flex, you work when you want to, you reserve a time that fits your schedule, and you provide that service. Next slide, please. I wanted to mine down a little bit more on career choice, because I think this is really a fantastic benefit that our employees have. And within, in essence, Amazon will fully fund college tuition, or high school diplomas, GEDs, and English as a second language proficiency certifications. So that could be associate's degrees, that could be bachelor's degrees, two-year degrees, four-year degrees, certificates in a number of different in-demand industries for Amazon's frontline employees, for courses related to these in-demand fields. Regardless, and this is an important distinction, regardless of whether these are in-demand fields that keep them within Amazon's workforce, or allow them to, the opportunity to jump to another in-demand career field. Importantly, Amazon prepays this tuition, a number of, you know, the prior model and the model in a lot of industries and a lot of, and a lot of companies is that it's a reimbursement after you complete the class or you complete the program. That's not the case here, which ensures that employees don't need pre-existing funds to be able to access education opportunities. All U.S. employees are eligible to participate 90 days after they start. And since the program has launched, more than 50,000 employees have pursued degrees. And in some of the 2021, those in-demand fields are things such as video game design, visual communications, nursing and healthcare, of course, IT programming, radiology, to name a few. Next slide, please. The project in West Covina is anticipated to generate over 400 jobs for local residents in the community. Amazon is committed to hiring a local workforce that is reflective of this community. And how we historically do that is, we look forward to opportunities to partner with workforce develop, local workforce development organizations, hiring agencies, things of that nature. And that we've, that's been proven, hiring local is good for our business and our bottom line as well. And then reiterate that our Delivery Service Partner Program helps entrepreneurs build their own businesses. And lastly, Amazon Flex, you know, allows folks to, you know, earn extra money through more of an independent contractor model. Next slide, please. Overall, the economic benefits include more than $30 million of new investment through the construction and build-out to enhance this site. Sales tax generated from delivery vehicle gasoline purchases that will now occur much more frequently in your community. Indirect job creation from the project, construction-related investments, and that's on top of the 400 operational jobs. And induced sales tax revenue from purchases of equipment from small businesses and local businesses. And again, reiterating the entrepreneurial opportunities for our delivery associates. Next slide, please. And now I will pass it back to Umberto, who will follow up with some of our safety measures as well as our sustainability goals.
Thank you, Tim, for that. So just to kind of wrap it up really quick, so do want to talk about a little bit of, you know, the aspects, the world that we live in right now, so Code 19 response. So just want to provide a little bit of the things that we've done to improve the well-being of our employees. So we've implemented about 150 process updates. We invested over $800 million on safety measures to date. And that includes temperature checks for all of our associates, proper PPE for our folks, enhancing cleansing at our sites, social distancing, of course, onsite testing, and Amazon Relief Fund and Life Works. And this is basically a $25 million grant where our folks could apply if they're looking to seek some sort of financial relief due to a hardship. Next slide, please. And so wanted to talk about a little bit some of just the innovation here at Amazon in terms of sustainability. And basically, here, we're, you know, Amazon is committed to building a sustainable business for customers and for the planet. So in 2019, we co-founded the Climate Pledge, and we're investing about $2 billion to support the development of technologies and services to reduce carbon emissions. We've actually purchased already 100 electric vehicle, electric delivery vehicles that are being deployed throughout the country. We're looking to have 100% renewable energy by 2025. Our shipment zero is basically looking to look at 50% net zero by 2030. We're also looking to reduce our package waste through the use of carbon-neutral packaging. And obviously, we could pass this link to staff to, if you all want to learn a little bit more. If we go to the next slide, please. So one of the things that I do want to touch upon was a comment that was made at the last hearing. You know, Amazon being the company that it is, a large company, we do want to be a corporate steward. So we do have a dedicated program to basically address the concerns of the community, and that's our community operations team. So basically, our community operations team, their North Star, is that they believe neighbors are our customers, and we aim to work specifically with the communities that they, that we deliver in, and for go new partnerships. So we do have a dedicated team. If you have issues related to noise, trash, traffic, what have you, that is the specific email that you all could reach out to. Once we have the facility launched, you know, if the vote goes well, and we will have a dedicated person that we will hand over to the city manager, plan commissioner, so that you could reach out and say, hey, I'm having this concern. I saw X, Y, and Z on this site. That way, we could be partnerships and through this process. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and we're available, Tim, myself, for any questions as well.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Chris Harris?
You can come back to him.
Commissioner Williams?
I did. I had a couple of questions for the applicant. This location that's being proposed for West Covina, will this be an Amazon facility that will not be unionized?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, would this location...
For Amazon, not be unionized?
Not be unionized?
Correct.
I cannot answer that question. I do not know. I'd have to ask the Amazon representatives. Any other questions of me you would like, or have them come back up?
You can have them come back up.
Commissioner Williams, to answer your question, and let me repeat back the question. Is the question, will this proposed West Covina delivery station utilize unionized workers within the facility?
Correct.
My understanding is that nationally, within the U.S., there are no Amazon delivery stations that currently utilize unionized employees. That would be the same in this instance as well.
Okay. Do you see somewhere down the line that that would change?
That's a fantastic question. I wouldn't begin to speculate. I, yeah, unfortunately, I wouldn't be willing to speculate on that.
Just to interject, we're not here this evening to talk about how Amazon is running their business. We're only here to, you know, vote on how we're going to move forward. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Commissioner Heng?
Not at this moment.
Vice Chair Lewis?
So I'm reading through the proposed development agreement, and I'm trying to frankly make heads or tails out of this 914 trips per day. It's under Section 11, Section C, or I guess it would be, yeah, Section 11 subdivision C sub I, where it says, "Per the traffic impact study conducted by NV5, in the initial study mitigated negative declaration document, the facility shall not generate more than 914 trips per day." Period. So what I'm trying to figure out is, is that an average? Is that a, is that a true cap? What is meant by that?
I will pass this to my colleague, Umberto.
I'll use for the musical chairs here, but that's based on an average day. So basically, the way the traffic analysis, and maybe the traffic agent, you could speak to it, but the way we conduct these type of analyses throughout the state, whether it be a traffic analysis or through Sequo, MND, EIR, it's based on an average day. So the number that's here in front of you is based on our average day. And those anomalies of seasonality, because of their speculative and unknown, are usually left out of these type of analysis. So the way I interpret it is based on an average day.
I'm just, I'm a little lost here, because I want to understand what the impacts are.
Sure.
By saying that's an average, or a potential average day, and it says it's capped at that amount, and then there's, frankly, in my business, this is called weasel words. It says, "If the operations exceed the number of allowable trips per day, the city and property owners shall meet, develop, and implement a resolution satisfactory to both parties." Well, an agreement to agree is not an agreement. So I need to have more solid understanding of what that actually means. It, you know, one of the things that I would say would make a great deal of sense is that if you, if you wanted to say that, you know, it's going to, based upon seasonality, increase based upon the traffic consultant's indication, you know, where you have a VC impact of over .02, or a .02 increase in VC impact, I would say that that should be something that's built into this agreement, and there should be a hard cap based upon... and there should be a hard cap based upon that, as opposed to, as opposed to just this language that doesn't really provide any certainty. And, and frankly, it, it, it leaves the city in a tough spot because if you guys decide you're going to use it as something that you're not representing to us, that you're using it tonight, we're kind of stuck. So I, 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 I want a, I want a commitment or an understanding from you guys that we can put in writing here that explains what that is, what that actually means. Because 914 vehicle trips, I mean, okay, fine, that, that, that's probably fairly reasonable. If, if you do the math, that's like 450 some odd vehicles, almost, well, 460 per day, right? On an average day, in and out, right? So my, my thing is, is that if we're talking about a situation where, you know, you triple that capacity because Amazon has a great year because, you know, the, the local health department has said, you know what, to heck with the little guy, we'll keep Amazon open. But Amazon can deliver, and everybody's forced to buy from Amazon in December or November. You know, what are we looking at? Are we looking at, you know, three times the volume, four times the vol, I mean, that's, that's the problem I have with this.
And I totally understand. And, and, and just to kind of reiterate the, the statement that was made earlier, the way that these impacts throughout the entire state of California are based on an average day of your operations. And so the number that you have here is a cap on our average day. And the draft, at least I saw, or the language I saw, indicated that numbers that are in front of you are based on an average day. And so we do have safeguards as part of the conditions that are, are placed on there that do require counts throughout the year to include that. Again, impacts related to what we perceive to be an issue or not, or what have you, are based on that average day. Is, is the X facility at this location causing a significant impact? Those analyses based on traffic throughout the entire state of California is based on an average day. Seasonally, similar to a mall, to the statement that was made by the traffic engineer, we would have nothing but asphalt. That's why it's based on what most of your year is going to be.
And, and, and I'm not asking for you to be a soothsayer here, okay? I'm, I'm asking for, for some, some language that would be very clear in terms of what the expectations are if you guys go over this average number.
No, no, and, and I believe that's, that's in there. I believe if we exceed.
Well, I, I just read it, and it's the agreement to agree language. And, and basically, it puts, so, so it basically puts the ball in, in your court. If you guys don't want to agree with us as to what's reasonable, then, okay, we're at an impasse. Then what? And so we, we fundamentally have an agreement that falls apart because there's just an agreement to agree at a future date as to how to resolve that. I want to have specificity because at the end of the day, if we don't have an agreement with Amazon, that is frankly, the property owner who is directing Amazon to comply with these conditions, we don't really have an agreement. And I, I think that that's a fundamental issue. I, I, at, at the end of the day, you know, there's a lot of people here who want to talk about this and everything, and, and to the extent that they have concerns about that, I think that's something that you guys should be prepared to address.
Definitely. And we're open to any language that staff might be willing to put in. But like I said, our, our interpretation, at least my interpretation, is based on an average day. And if there needs to be safeguards to incorporate that, to ensure that this is what we're adhering to, and we need to come back or something to that effect with language that you feel a little bit more comfortable, I think we're open to having that conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on one sec. I'm sorry. I, I do have a question for you. Sorry. Since we're asking questions, I guess my question is to add into Commissioner Lewis' question is that Amazon is such a big company, and you've been operating all over, not only in the States, but throughout the entire world. You must have documentations or data to support. Because what we have as a resident or as a commissioners is based on what you said. On the average, you have 900 and something trucks that comes in and out. But we don't really, we, meaning speaking for myself or as a resident, we don't really know what the impact that would be and what the changes would be. So, so for you to say, as an Amazon, which is one of the largest company, and logistically, data wise, you have all those informations. You may know very well in a variety of ranges, you know, back and forth in terms of, you know, what peak season looked like, or what low season looked like, and what have you. However, we as a residents, you know, or as commissioners, we don't have those information. The only thing that we have is verbally, that you're saying that this is how many trips that we're having, which is up to 900 trips. Now, trips to me and how Commissioner Lewis' interpretation is a little bit different. To me, I felt like it's just car, 1,000 car coming in. But you're saying 1,000 car coming in and out, so you break into half, so it's only close to 450 or so.
Correct. And, and I could open up to the traffic engineer. There's also passenger car equivalents to the line haul trucks as well. So those numbers do translate to, to physical cars depending on that as well.
But do you understand what we're, what we're trying to ask you? Is that you got to have the data, you got to have the informations, but we only have your word. It's basically a ranges between, you're almost doubling in peak season, and you're saying you don't have information on peak season? You do have information on peak season. How could you not? This is an international company that's ran, and, and of course, during COVID time, it's a little bit different. Obviously, everything is shut down, you got a little bit more busier. Those peak is, of course, is off more than the normal operations that you have. So it's very disheartening to hear, as Amazon is such a big company, and the, the information that provide us is that, you know, there's a huge gap difference between off-season and not off-season. And also, at the same time, you're saying, you know, at one part, you can come and say, well, this is the precise thing, and these are all the information they have. And then the other hand, you're saying that we don't really know these informations. So my questions to you is that, logistically, if you can tell which car is parked at which point in time in terms of, you know, when the packages are being delivered and what have you, how could you not know this information that you're providing us? I guess it, it just, it questions that not only commissioners, also as a resident, and also the resident that who lives around the neighborhood, they do want to know those, a little bit more solid numbers so that they can anticipate in terms of the impact or not an impact it may have on the community.
And, and definitely. And to that point, I, I think on our end, because of the data that we have throughout our, what is an average day, we're able to provide a little bit more assurance as to these are specific numbers. But as you mentioned, with COVID, we do have these anomalies that COVID taught us that, you know, maybe we didn't have enough capacity, or maybe there's going to be a little bit less. We don't know in that specific future. And also, just to, to, to answer that specific question of, it's my word, it's not necessarily just the word, you know, we did have it, our traffic engineer, peer reviewed as well by the city's traffic engineer. So there's some empirical evidence in there as well. It's not just me standing up here and saying this is what it is.
So I have a question. Wasn't there a monitoring process in place, city staff? Weren't they going to install some sort of monitoring thing that counts the vehicles going in?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, you may.
We're getting a little bit off of the legal standard here because trip counts in and of themselves are no longer what determines under the California Environmental Quality Act whether or not there's an impact. We've now switched over to the vehicle miles traveled basis, and they have done a trip count analysis because they're looking at the degradations of the intersections in the area from an operational standpoint. So from a SEQA analysis, do you have a significant impact? Your traffic analysis has said no, the peer review by the city has said no. The off-peak hour intersection operations are showing you A and B levels of service. So you can, they are more than capable of experiencing quite a bit of degradation during the seasonal peaks. And as been mentioned, you don't design things for seasonal peaks, or we'd be nothing but roadways and parking lots. So the trip counts are not really, if it, if it's 900, if it's 700, or if it's 2,000, it's not your SEQA standard of analysis for whether or not you have a significant impact or not. It's looking at your VMT analysis, and you have your traffic studies that were, you have a traffic engineer and a peer review by the city.
Yeah, so I understand that, and they understand that too. So there's been reports done already. So what I'm asking is for city staff to answer their questions effectively and clear. So that's already been done. So let's tell them about the protocols. In the last report and last meeting, there was information given to us that talks about the monitoring process and other aspects. So they're asking general questions, and I think we can answer that. We just need someone to respond specifically, not a general base, but specifically in regards to what was discussed at the last meeting that talks about the monitoring process that Amazon will conduct to ensure it's in compliance with certain, the amount of traffic going in and out of the complex, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Do we recall that?
Chair FMA?
Yes.
Yes. So as part of this operational condition, they are, they are, the operator is required to do a, a trip count for annually for a 72-hour consecutive period of time and submit that trip count to the city.
Great. So they will be conducting a count. So just for example, like, for example, like, let's just say Chick-fil-A, when they had traffic overflowing on the streets, eventually that got back to the city council, and it got back to the city, and, and the city worked to try to resolve that matter by repositioning where cars went in and out. So there's different process, a process that can occur that if, for some reason, which is not going to be the case, that somehow they gave us, they gave us an analysis on the max limit. So just for example, they're not going to, it could be the week before Christmas, they're not going to pack, triple pack that capacity because then it becomes a, a fire hazard. So there's other laws and fire codes and capacity limits that are in place already through our city ordinances and our, and, and state law. So there is safeguards in place in general that will address issues like that. So there's no way that, no matter how many deliveries they're going to have, they, they're not going to break the fire code, they're not going to break state law that talks about the capacity limits in general, and they're not going to create a fire hazard or a road hazard. And I, and I hope, Amazon, am I correct on that? Correct.
Just to kind of piggyback on that, so there are physical constraints in our facility. There's, it's only X square footage, X numbers of employees could fit there. So to that point, there are physical constraints that do limit our operation as well.
Thank you.
I guess at the end of the day, there are a few things that you got asking for. Negative declarations of environmental impact, the general plan amendment that needs to be changed, zone change, precise plan change, you know, the tree removal, those are not that important. But the two main items here tonight in front of us is really the general plan amendment change and the zone change. Now, without these two, these two items are what we need to, you know, look at, and we also need to look at, and that's why we're asking questions regarding whether the traffic, trip counts, or whether the travel mileage. These are, at the end of the day, the two main items that we're actually looking at is the general plan amendment and the zone change. Without these changes from, changing from a church to a M1, it, it is just not going to work, basically. So those questions that we ask, and also the residents who are here tonight, or last week, those are the items that we're concerned about, and we're, we're looking at it, and we're talking about. Yes, trip counts, mileage, travel, those things are important, how, how we determine and how the wording are. We, we are, at the end of the day, are making decisions on the general plan amendment and the zone change tonight. Those are the two critical items.
Commissioner Hang, those have already been addressed. Do you have a question?
Not at this moment.
So I guess what the commission is probably asking is what is your max capacity? You're not going to push it to three times the limit, or, you know, I would imagine we're not the first distribution center, we're not going to be your last. I guess if you reach capacity with us, you'll have to look for another location. So what, I mean, can you give us some feedback on?
So, so on that, I'll be honest with you, I, I can't speculate as to what it would be specifically. But to what was stated by the other commissioner, we do have physical constraints side of the facility, the amount of parking, the amount of vans we could actually house there do limit our capacity. To, to one of the statements that was made earlier, our intent here is to be very hyperlocal and serve the, service the neighboring communities. So we're looking to have a lot, several of these last mile delivery facilities kind of sprinkled throughout the network to basically serve as a post office. You know, the mail carrier is going to have more, more mail during Christmas time. It, it's the same type of analogy. Unfortunately, because it, it is speculative in nature, I, I don't have those hard numbers. But throughout 11 months of the year, that's what we're looking at. That's, that's our, our capacity.
When do you foresee you'll be in operation?
Jeez. What are we looking at to? Middle of next year, we're looking to.
Okay. The only question that I had actually was that you have these self-employed entrepreneurs that you're going to be helping to start their own business. Will they also be regulated? I mean, will they be drug tested?
Yeah, so, so basically, our DSPs go through the same type of background checks as an employee, just as Tim and myself. So they go through the same type of background checks as, as any type of Amazon employee, even though they're a third-party provider.
And obviously, they're not wage earners. They're being paid as a company? AB 5 went into effect January 1st, 2020, where they are not allowed to be 1099.
Sorry. Can you repeat the question?
I was just asking if they were going to be wage earners, or if, how would they be paid?
Yeah, they will be, so they, they will not be what we call regular blue badge Amazon employees. They will be employed by the delivery service partner, which forms a, a company, you know, typically an LLC, for example, and they would be employees of the LLC.
Okay. I think that concludes our questions for the applicant. So we will move forward to hearing, actually, we're, Paulina? We have 27-plus persons who would like to speak. The majority of them are in favor of the project. Can we limit them to three minutes per person?
Madam Chair, you have the right to reduce the amount of speaker time if there's a large number of speakers.
Let's go ahead and do that.
Okay. Do you want to do three minutes?
Yes, please. I have a few. I'm not asking you to come up, I just want to know if you're in favor or opposed. Sandra Vega?
And I have a quick question, real fast. And I were encouraged, applicant, that when it goes to the city council eventually, that you, you, you present the videos you have. I think the videos that Amazon has on YouTube and so forth, and the videos you guys produce really clears up a clear message, and it's, it's a great opportunity, hopefully at the council meetings, that you guys present that and, and show the audience at that time as well of the, the background and the great work that, that Amazon does. So thank you.
Chavette Perez at four, opposed or favor? In favor? Huh? She's not here?
Not sure.
She's not sure.
I can't read your first name. Is it Kyle Avila? Opposed or in favor? She's not here? Juan Sanchez, opposed or in favor? Joel Arroyo? Favor? Patricia Hernandez? Opposed or in favor? Patricia Hernandez, opposed or in favor? Neutral? Okay, we will begin hearing from, from those who are in favor of the project. So we will go ahead and start with Joel Arroyo. Please come forward.
So I want to say a couple of things. I'm in favor of Amazon, because Amazon is gonna provide a lot of jobs for everybody in this city. And that's gonna be good for everybody, right? I have to say.
Thank you. Abel Jimenez?
I'm in favor because just the jobs, it's hard to get a job, so my son just got out of college, though it's going to be something good for him. So I'm, I'm in favor with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear from your son, David Junior. Valades.
I am, I'm in college, and I think Amazon is really good, because they're gonna pay for my college tuition, and I could still work and get a little bit of money to pay for food and expenses. I think it's good. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia Magana, Magana? Oh, no, no, I don't, excuse me. Jeff Hollenbeck?
I'm in favor of this for the simplicity of jobs that it creates, and it's made my life easier to be able to...
Can you speak into the microphone a little closer?
To be able to push a button and have things delivered the next day, and for the jobs that it creates for the community, and the quality of life for my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Cody, is it Yan?
Here in favor of Amazon being built, a lot of factors that I'm sure you're gonna hear, a lot more job creation, but along with that, community-driven, not having any major traffic impact, while also bringing in those jobs and bringing in the economic effect in the community, is why I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jason Kenoschira?
I'm in favor of building Amazon. Everything you heard already, job creation, seems like it's a good deal with school tuition and all the perks that go along with it.
Thank you. Marco Pachero?
Hi, David. I'm in favor to build Amazon, because it's better opportunities for the jobs in the city of West Covina.
I'm in favor with the building of the new Amazon. Same with other, for opportunities for all the young people that wanna start their career, and makes it easier for everybody. Like they said, press a button and things get delivered the next day, and it'll be great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Beck?
I'm also in favor of the Amazon, mostly because of the job, but after seeing the slideshow, I'm sold on their traffic plan, their benefits that they give people. It's huge that they're gonna pay for these people to go to college and better themselves. I just think it's a win all around, and extra money for the city. Thank you.
Daniel Nichols?
Thank you. I'm also in favor of the Amazon being built here in West Covina for multiple reasons, some said before, others is this very simple data, I mean, anyone, everyone can look this up, bestplaces.net about our city, West Covina. At the moment, we have an 11.3% unemployment rate when the United States average is 6%. So we're almost double what is actually going on in our states right now. This will help build the market, and after the gentleman from Amazon explained the hourly rate of $18 an hour, simply quickly calculated, that comes out to $37,440 per year for one person, when our average income in our city is $24,994. This is just data I'm reading off of the net, but that's a significant increase for all of our, you know, our citizens here. So I am in favor, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm also in favor of the Amazon build. The jobs when I came in was a big part of it, and then also I have young kids, so opportunity to them for, to work and earn money for college is pretty huge. But the gentleman just pointed those benefits out, far outweigh those. But, so yeah, I think it's a good opportunity all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, how did you say your last name?
Last name is Manhart. I think it's a good deal for Amazon to come into this community, because there's jobs, yes, number one, there's money to be made. I like money, I'm sure every one of you up here like money. For the community to prosper, you gotta have something there. Well, if the unemployment rate is so high, this is one way to stop, this is one way to ship, to shave it off. I'm for it, thank you.
Thank you. Dirk Johnson?
I just wanna, just wanna say I'm in favor for the project. I have a couple of kids at home, and around Christmas time it gets a little crazy, so I'm gonna do the flex thing, you can like run around, do some packages on your own, earn a little extra money, because it's getting expensive to raise kids these days. So I just wanna say I'm in favor for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few that are neutral. Steve Bennett? Steve Bennett?
Well, you don't have to speak right now.
Yes.
I'm actually neutral tonight, so hopefully this goes in place where you need it. First, I want to thank Brian for showing up on time. I'm assuming a short agenda, you might actually be here through the whole meeting, so that's gonna be an improvement over usual. So that's pretty good. Always looking for positives. Couple things. They mentioned the trip counts, they mentioned monitoring those, and I appreciate Commissioner Lewis for asking those questions, because the reality is, if they're gonna monitor them, and there's nothing in the agreement that says how they're going to mitigate when they go over those averages, then it doesn't really matter if they monitor them or not, Brian. So your argument of their monitoring, awesome dude, but if there's no mitigation to it, it's no big deal. By the way, the average of 1 in 2,000 is 1,000. So when they talk about averages, I mean, let's kind of put that in perspective. They mentioned drones in the thing, and they're not gonna do that in the future, put it in the agreement. Put it in the agreement that we're not doing drones. They're saying they're not, but as he said, business choices change. So put it in the agreement. Fuel purchases, they said they're gonna do in West Covina. By 2025, they're gonna be electric. I'll let you think about that for a second. You got that one right, Brian. $4 million from a company that makes 300 billion a year. 300 billion! Their former CEO just fueled a rocket for people to go to space. I have a feeling they can afford more. Okay? I have a feeling. $2 million upfront is chump change for a city council that constantly does deficit spending. Chump change, they'll spend it by Friday. $280,000 is only for 10 years, and then it's 80,000 with the 1 or 2% that you get for property increase on taxes. Nothing. Nothing. We get a franchise fee from our utility companies and our cable company that's paid by the residents, by the way, it's a tax, if you guys don't know what that means, that's paid on every bill, a couple dollars by every person, and that pays for road tear and access to facilities. Why are we not doing the same? That needs to be in this agreement, and the number needs to be a lot higher than 4 million over 10 years, because that's more wear and tear on these roads. The on and off ramps at Vincent and Azusa are absolutely going to be terrifying for people to get on and off the freeways. I don't care what time you go to work, the pandemic changed everything. Insignificant is the key word tonight. I want you to think about something. Everyone in the room right now who thinks they are insignificant, raise your hand. Because they just said tonight that the number of traffic is insignificantly changed. You know what? I'm not insignificant, and I live in this city. I wasn't brought here to say, yes, I want Amazon, I wasn't brought here because I work for them. I don't know if those people all did or not, but I'll tell you right now, I am not insignificant, and neither are the residents here. I appreciate the fact that you don't think legally we can make that decision, but you guys are in charge of exactly what goes on in this city, and I would appreciate you guys to make it significant, because it matters to us. Have a good night, guys.
There were a few persons that came in. Were you in favor? Because we already called those who are in favor. Patricia Hernandez?
Okay, so I was originally opposed to this, because I have some health issues and stuff like that. Just to make the long story short, the paper that they're passing you is a letter in regards to my health condition and stuff, and I used, I originally lived on the south side of the building where the hospital was. But throughout time, I ended up suffering some medical issues due to the hospital being next door. They have a truck that goes in at 3 o'clock in the morning that fills the oxygen tanks every night, and so I was working up every single night and having, you know, originally getting sleep deprivation, depression, anxiety, and stuff like that. I asked my manager a couple of years later if I could move, if they had any openings and stuff like that. So it just happened that I got the opportunity to move to the west side, which is the east side, the east side of Faith Community Church, where you guys want to, or where Amazon wants to put their van deck there. Anyway, so since I've moved there, I have been off of all my medication, I have improved dramatically 100%, and now finding out, and we just found out in, in July, and I came here actually to a city council member, because, city council committee in Maine, and I asked them that there was an Amazon project coming up, and they said, no, they didn't know anything about it. I'm the one that told my manager that what was going on, and that's why they found out. And this was in, I think, August is when they found out about it. Nobody told us, nobody came around. I spoke to Mr. Navarro, myself, about a lot of concerns. I don't know if you can see this, but this is a picture of my house, and this is my, this is a picture of my bedroom, and that is going to be straight across where the building is. That's how close mine is. My grandson's, my grandson's room's right here, which is the corner. That's how close we are. There, if you look at what their, the site of their planning was, okay, they want to put a route that goes right in front of my door. This leads all the way to the seniors. So I represent 98 seniors, by the way, that could not make it here, that don't have a voice, because they're old, they have disabilities, and, and they cannot be here. These seniors were not notified by Amazon whatsoever. We were barely not, we, the only reason why I knew is, like I said, I had came, I called, I had spoken to Mrs. Burns several times. She can tell you I was bugging a lot. Anyways, but most of, you know, what I'm concerned about right now is this, the safety, our safety, our sleep, the sleep deprivation that my six-year-old grandson's gonna have, because he can't get up for school in the morning, because the bells of the trucks that are going off and on at nighttime, and the safety of, of the children that go to school right across the street, which is Grove Center. I understand that, that Amazon hires felons, and I have a photo here of Amazon actually showing that they hire felons right here. And it says on here that they hire felons, and thing is, what kind of felons do they hire? Do they hire felons of molestation? Because we have Grove Center right across the street, we, we have Las Palmas right down the street, you know, so there's several schools, and my concern is, what about the kids?
We've exceeded your lifetime.
Okay. Lastly, I hope that you guys do support the police department, because we need more police officers. If you decide to do this, I hope you bring more police officers on, on duty for this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, what was your name? Was that, was your name Chavette Perez? I'm sorry, Patricia Hernandez, that's right. Chavette Perez, please.
Cheryl Perez.
Cheryl. Call me Chavette if you want to. I, I want to say thank you to the Chair and to the Commission for hearing us. And originally, I wasn't opposed to Amazon coming in, I, I use Amazon, I like Amazon, but my concern again was for my residents at Lark Island Village, and so I want to say thank you to the developers for answering our, it was like six concerns, but one of them wasn't on the board, so I just want to bring that back to the Commission. If you could at least try to put this into the proposed development agreement, and it's the topic of the no-business from 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM on the east side of our property, so where the vans are parked, and I understand right now that it's like an understanding that there won't be any activity on that side of the, their property, but if that could be written into the proposed development agreement, that would... be written into the proposed development agreement, that would, that would be great. And then, our front entrance, so back to the traffic, and I do feel a little insignificant when we're talking about our front entrance. We're going to be greatly impacted by the vehicles coming and going. It even happened with the church even on Sunday. So, if you were trying to get into our property with, when the church was letting out, oh my gosh, like you had to like, you know, wave your hands, flash your flashers because the church, all they wanted to do was just get out of church and get home. So, if we were trying to merge in to turn into the property, it was really hard. So, maybe that could be something Amazon could do to educate their drivers, to let them know like, like common road courtesy, because we do have approximately 45 seniors that park on that San Bernardino Road front entrance that will be trying to leave the property. And if we get a backflow of cars parked there, or delivery trucks, or vans, it's going to be difficult for them. So, I just wanted to bring that out for your attention. And then, lastly, it was said at the last meeting that this is a 10-year, that Green Law is going to have a 10-year contract with Amazon, and I know that the Commission is deciding to change the zoning for that property. So, my question for you to think about with Green Law, because they're really going to be our, our neighbors, Green Law and Amazon's going to be our neighbor that's renting the property, but what will happen after the 10-year agreement with Amazon? What's, you know, how will that impact our neighborhood if Amazon chooses to not use that location and go on to a different location? So, please try and write that into your development agreement as well, if there's a way to protect us in the future. And again, that's it. And thank you again for answering our concerns that we had.
Thank you. I missed someone who was in favor, Adam Highland.
Good evening, everybody. This is a big deal. I think this is great that it's come into our community. I have a mother that's 65 years old. When COVID hit, she was laid off from her job. She got a job with Amazon. Amazon's always hiring. She's been working for them. She loves her job. I don't know if any of you have had any parents or anybody that's a senior citizen that has had to look for a job at their age. There's not a lot out there. Amazon hired my mom. It's been great for her. I think it's great for the community. I have school-aged children that at some point will be looking for a job. I would love to be able to send them down the street and say, "Apply to Amazon." They're always going to be here. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you. We'll begin with those who are opposed. Perry Martinez? I'm sorry, Percy.
Hello to you all again. Unlike a lot of the speakers here in favor of the bill, they don't live here. I do. 24 years living in this great city, and I'm opposed to 1,000 cars daily for 10 months. I'm opposed to pollution, and that's just for 10 months. In peak season, it's going to be triple. I come out of that industry, I know it's going to triple. They know it. They got the data. You asked at the last meeting to have the numbers down. You ask good questions again. Again, why don't they write it down? It's like giving them a blank check. Bullshit. Do the right thing. Ask those hard questions. I like your question too. You guys can do something better, more productive. Build 20 houses on the Padilla side, 20 on San Bernardino, collect property taxes for 30 years. That's a lot better. That's what we needed here. Houses sell in two days out here. Two on my street, two days and they were gone. So, no, there's a lot of other ways to make this city striving again. This is not one. Tell Mr. Lamb to go sell his magic beans somewhere else because we don't need him here in West Covina.
Manuel Roman? Manuel Roman? Martha Miranda? Jerry Potras?
Good evening, Jerry Potras. I am a West Covina resident. I'm totally unaffiliated with anybody, organization. I live near the project. I am absolutely astonished at the number of vans that are being considered to, that will be there. The project may be returning the zone to a previous one, but it's completely different. What was there when it was the original zone, didn't have all this in and out, vans. This is going to be a major fundamental transportation, I mean, transformation of where I live. I don't live right next to it, but I am on Azusa, Baddelo, and San Bernardino constantly, and I'm one of those insignificant people that do my travelings after rush hour. And I have learned it's really busy there in that area. Tonight's presentation and the last presentation concern me because there were vagueness and ambiguities and inconsistencies that I really would like to have any promises the developer makes or Amazon makes to be put in the development agreement. They don't mean anything if they're just words that they promise. For example, one of the inconsistencies I've seen is they're going to have 250 jobs. They're also going to have four, over 400 jobs. How much? Many jobs are they really talking about? They talked about $15 an hour, and they've also talked about $18 an hour. Come on. I'm concerned, on page five, the driveway count occurrence, it just is vague during a calendar year. It should be apples to apples, I think, same basic month from year to year. Should have something. It's just, I'm concerned. It's vague. There's nothing in the development agreement that actually prohibits trucks and vans from using Azusa during rush hour, and I can tell you, it's busy, Azusa's busy after rush hour. It's busy during rush hour. Please, whatever you do, make sure that the development thing, agreement, is much more specific than it is because the city cannot and will not enforce things if it's not in the agreement. We're having issues now with West Covina's enforcing things. Thank you.
Robinson?
Good evening, Bill Robinson, resident. I'm not being paid by Amazon to come here to this microphone. From, from my analysis and understanding of, of the SEQA process, the level of impacts referred in the environmental documents involving significantly increased and composition of truck traffic rise to the level of preparation of an environmental impact report under the SEQA process. A mitigated negative deck and initial study is inadequate for these purposes. You don't have enough information tonight to make a legal decision. For the, for the level of the impacts described in the environmental documents, public safety, noise, and air quality impacts can extend significantly beyond the 300-foot notification zone currently used in the environmental documents. The notification zone should be extended to at least 1,000 feet to ensure that these impacts are properly disclosed and to determine if impacts can be mitigated to a level of insignificance. The zoning of this facility is incompatible with the adjacent residential zoning of our bedroom community, which assumes proper and compatible public safety, noise, and air quality protections. The development and operational standards are intended to provide compatibility with and protection to the surrounding properties, you know, noise, glare, vibration. The proposed zoning changes is incompatible with and will significantly affect adjacent residential properties without any possibility of mitigation through buffer zones or other measures to reduce impacts to a level of insignificance. Ballin Park and Irwindale need to take a look at this, this traffic study. The trip distribution driveway data presented tonight needs verification. I don't believe it. Comment 14. For this scale of project, the proposed zoning changes identified and the resulting significant impacts to adjacent residential communities, the level of public involvement provided to date is inadequate and flawed. An additional action should be taken by the city to increase the zone of notification to at least 1,000 feet and to conduct properly facilitated public meetings to convey the level of impact to be experienced. I don't have a computer at my home. I couldn't participate in these, these zone discussions that occurred. To finish my sentence, any potential mitigation measures and to receive robust public input to the environmental disclosure process, the project described rises to a level well beyond the minimum level of public notification process currently provided. You folks, a mitigated negative deck won't cut it. You need an environmental impact report.
Jocelyn Ruiz?
I've heard, I've heard the board discuss Amazon's traffic studies, their environmental reviews, and other technicalities, but let's talk about the people that will be going in and out to work there every day. Amazon is bringing 400 jobs, but what kind of jobs does Amazon create? I want to share with everyone a report based on data, data that Amazon itself reported to OSHA for warehouse workers in Los Angeles County. In 2020, the injury rate for warehouse worker, for the warehousing industry was 4.0 per 100 workers. On Amazon, warehouse workers were had at a rate of, were hurt at a rate of 13.11 per 100 workers. That's 3.2 times higher than workers in the same industry. That year, 96% of all injuries were so severe that workers needed accommodations or had to miss work entirely. And when workers had to miss work for their injuries, they were forced to miss an average of 54 days. That's almost two months of missed work. And for all years that data is available, Amazon's rate on injuries is higher than the rest of the warehousing industry. Amazon's workers are getting injured more frequently, more severely, and need more time to recover than non-Amazon workers. Does the city council want an injury meal in their community? Are these the kinds of jobs that we want for our neighbors? Is this where we want to send our kids? How will City Hall or City Council react when we start seeing 18 and 19-year-olds with lifelong injuries? This community deserves better, and as elected, I hope that you prioritize your community's needs and well-being over corporate profits. Thank you.
Ron Herrera? Ron Herrera?
Commissioner, I'm Ron Herrera. A couple of things that you should know about me. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of Teamsters Local 396 here next door in Covina, and I'm also the President of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, 300 affiliate strong, 800,000 union members. And I noticed that these gentlemen are taking notes, so I just want to be clear that what they hear from me, you should be ashamed of yourselves. $15 an hour, $15 to $18 an hour. Which one of us can raise a family on $15 to $18 an hour? When Amazon was being unionized in Bessemer, Alabama, they violated every labor law possible. You're going to see that election redone again here soon. The Labor Board's going to rule that they have to have another election. But I like what you said, Commissioner Lewis, about putting things in writing. How about a community benefits agreement? Like in Los Angeles where, you know, there's partnerships between labor and community, and even developers with strong, you know, labor protections. But I'm here to definitely, you know, ask all of you to demand more from Amazon. You know, earlier speakers said about, you know, the wealth of this company, and definitely, you don't want this community shortchanged. You don't want the workers here shortchanged. As my sister Jocelyn said earlier, they, the disabilities that come out of that plant are horrendous. The injuries that come out of that plant are, are just astronomical. Just look into what Governor Newsom signed about a week and a half ago, 701. That was directed right at them, directed right at them on pace of work because workers were going to the restroom, and that time was held against them because of production standards. And now warehouses like Amazon are, are having to declare quotas on, on pace of work. So, that's the type of company you have here. And I know you're all good people, and I urge you to do more for the community and not take this to the, to the city council without, you know, diving deeper into this. And thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just had, I had a quick question. Are you, um, thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify, are you a resident of West Covina? I just wanted to clarify from my notes. Are you a resident of West Covina? Okay, thank you.
That's enough. It's, we're going to move on with the meeting here. Sandra Vega?
Good evening. My name is Sandra Vega, and I'm a UPS employee going on 22 years and a proud Teamster at that. Tonight, I want to speak on behalf of my brothers and sisters from the San Gabriel Hub and the surrounding the surrounding residents, and they're also surrounding residents of the West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley. We have an industry leading, we have, I'm sorry, I'm just a little upset here. We're here, the San Gabriel Valley, we have an industry leading wages and benefits that are the foundations of the communities that we live in. Since the gentleman from Amazon talked about the benefits, it's only fair that I mention how far we have to go. UPS employees start making $15 an hour, and well, a lot of us make over $41 an hour. Let me mention to you guys that fortunately, we pay zero when it comes to our insurance. We stand in opposition to this development, and we will fight to the end in prosperity for our families to ensure that, okay?
Claudia Magana.
Hey there. My name is Claudia Magana. I actually grew up in West Covina mostly. I went to South Hills High School. And I actually wasn't going to speak tonight, but there's some other residents that came out that were a little bit embarrassed but didn't know how else to participate. So in solidarity and support, I'm also speaking up because I still have family that lives here. My mom still lives here, my Nina still lives here, and I have a lot of friends who also still live here and who are raising kids here. Amazon is a terrible neighbor. They're a terrible employer, as you already heard, and they're just a terrible company overall that they had to pay people to come and speak. Like, my guy, give them some talking points at least, you know? Like, Jesus. Just do basic research on the company, right? Don't just hear what they're telling you. You all talked a lot about, I want to see how many cars, the impact. You have a facility down the street at Rosemead. I've sat outside that facility before and seen 900 cars in a single day come out, one trip. That makes it what, almost 2,000 going the way you all are calculating it? Like, you have several facilities nearby? Go look, go sit outside, see what real impact this is going to have in your community. Just do the basic research before you give away the farm to these folks. This is the most wealthiest company growing, expanding in every single industry. They're not just a logistics company, they are a software company, they're a surveillance company, they're all, they're in space now. Everybody can name an industry that Amazon is in. I have two workers about to go strike on them because they're terrible in the entertainment industry as well. Like, don't just hear what they're saying, actually do the research, don't just ask them to give you the answer that they want to tell you to get this project moved. You just have the ability to ask so much more. Look, a couple people showed up for the last meeting and asked a few questions, and now they gave you a wall and whatever else they're offering you, is there like little community offerings? Like, you can get so much more from this company. A community benefits agreement that outlines and addresses residents' real concerns, that has labor agreements in it, that make sure that those workers can have one day the same benefits that UPS workers actually have, right? And you're not taking away or bringing down the standards of other unionized workers. So, you know, all I got to say is, listen to your residents, listen to the folks that actually live here, that actually work here, that work nearby, that are going to be impacted by this decision, and do better for your community, do better for folks in West Covina.
I was here last week, and I spoke, and I'm not going to repeat what I said. A lot of what Steve Bennett said, I was going to touch on this evening. But I also wanted to go back, all the way back toward the beginning, when Mr. Lamb had mentioned that the only people that they really needed to address were the people in the first 300 yards of the vicinity. I want to know what 300 yards is. Oh, I'm sorry, 300 feet. Is that 711? Is that one street south? It definitely are the people in the apartments, and a lot of those people didn't get information on that. That has been brushed under the rug, and Mr. Lamb has, you know, brought up how the six people that opposed it last week, it wasn't significant, really, which we all know that it is significant. And if a lot more people, West Covina is huge. It's huge. And if you're going 300 feet to let people know something like this is going in, shame on you for not protecting us, the people of your city. That should have been, that should have been talked about, that should have been talked about for a long time, before this was even brought to the table, before plans were being made, before you put all that stuff up on these screens that you want us to believe that Mr. Lamb and Amazon is coming to the table with this information. And some people have said, I want good jobs for my kid. I want good jobs for my kid, too. I also want a quiet neighborhood. That's why we moved here. It took a lot to move here. We didn't know that something like this was going to go in, you know, two blocks from where we are. Oh, by the way, is that 300 yards, two blocks? Because West Covina goes all the way down to the city of industry, it goes, it comes all the way up here, it goes all the way over there. I mean, those people weren't notified, and some of those people, it might not affect them so much, but this is our front yard, some of our backyards. And you know what? It's appalling, because I don't know if all of you live in West Covina. You might not, so it's not going to affect you. You're just going to have to hear about it from, you know, one or two people, because the one or two people that were notified in the first, you know, 300 yards, feet, sorry, feet, yards, a football field, half a football field. You know, West Covina is huge. It's a lot more than 300 feet yards, 300 yards, 100 yards, whatever, you know? There's not many houses that go beyond that point. I mean, there's a ton of houses that go beyond that point. Some don't even start till that point. So that's, I have a lot more to say, but I think I said enough.
Jen Liu. Did I say that correct?
Good evening. Since I have received a notice, I've been waiting to receive a form stating whether I approve it or not. However, I did not. I showed up last time, but I didn't know what to do. As someone already said, I feel insignificant. And today, I was encouraged by this lady here to come up and speak. I'm pretty nervous right now. I'm not comfortable with public speaking, but if I don't say anything, a silence will be taken as a yes, and I'm not okay with that. Earlier, there was a couple outside. They are Chinese immigrants, and so they couldn't come up here and speak, so they asked me to speak for them. They live on Baddillo, and by the way, I live on San Bernardino. Even though I'm not a resident of CDO West Covina, but I live on San Bernardino, right across from where the location where the Amazon warehouse is going to build. It's going to affect me. And by the way, even though it's on the border of West Covina, when people looked up the Amazon warehouse, it's going to say CDO West Covina, they don't know where it is. So everyone in the CDO West Covina, every resident in the CDO West Covina will be affected because they will be labeled as living in the neighborhood of this Amazon warehouse. And by the way, I'm not trying, if you want to work in Amazon warehouse, that's fine. Even though I have trouble, I have questions about how they treat their workers, but if you want to work there, there are other warehouse, and they pay for you to commute there, they just said it. So you can go there. It just doesn't have to be at this location where there used to be a church. It doesn't have to be in CDO West Covina. That location is surrounded by three, by many, actually by, I don't know how many, but many, sorry, apartment complexes on three sides. So they're going to be affected. And I just want this to be a chance for me to speak that I oppose it, and I want it to, I want the city to send out a form to all the residents and also people living in CDO Covina to have them to be able to say whether they approve it or not, instead of just sending a notice. Basically, I took it as a notice that this is happening. I didn't know what I could do. I didn't even know if I can stop this or not by showing up and speaking here, but I'm doing my best. And by the way, the reason why I oppose it is because of the pollutions, air pollutions, noise pollutions, and also all this extra traffic, and also it's, at the end, I also have personal issue with the business they are running, how they treat their workers. And that would be end of my speech. Thank you.
I have just a few I want to verify that aren't here, not Brian Lopez. I believe he already spoke. I just want to confirm Juan Sanchez. Anyone who turned in a pink card that didn't speak this evening? No, not a few. Okay, so at this time, we'll hear from the applicant. Did you speak already, sir? Come on, just fill out, yeah, come up and fill out a card.
I live on, in Covina. I live in Covina. My name is Roy Hernandez. Been living there 30 years. I live right across the street from this Amazon complex. What I understand, the majority of the traffic going in and out of the complex is on San Bernardino Road. Why is that? Why is it the majority of the traffic on Baddillo? It's because Baddillo's West Covina? And you don't want inconvenience, constituents over there? And another thing, traffic is going to be terrible. I don't care about your survey, the survey's not perfect. Maybe the survey's half-right. You're going to have pollution. Trucks are going to be broken down. They're going to be broken down in the middle of the street. I don't think it's a good idea having it right in the middle of residential area. It's right smack in residential areas. You got apartments, houses, condominiums, and you want to put this big facility right in the middle? I just don't understand it. That's all I have to say.
At this time, I'll let the applicant come up and address these concerns.
Members of the Commission, again, Don Lamb here to address concern. Quite frankly, at this point in the evening, we have to say that we respect everyone's opinions for and against. I'm not here to argue with anyone. I'm not here to debate, but I'm very cognizant of opinions of people. They're entitled to them from our perspective. We also support what the city staff has done, what the city has done. The city is the independent reviewer of this project. The city staff has overseen all of the technical studies, all of the traffic, the noise, the lighting studies. They've recommended to you through their management team. We feel that we've answered just about everything possible. Most of the questions or statements, I don't feel I'm in the position to address on labor and wages. I understand everyone wants to do their best, and I don't deny that right to anyone. But from a land use perspective, we look at the city's needs, and we also recognize the city of West Covina can greatly benefit by this project. Again, it can benefit by the jobs, and whether it's 250 or 400 and some, based on what you look at, the number of employees and independent drivers and the like. But the revenue source that's been proposed and agreed to by the city is greatly needed for your budget. Your budget process here, you are running almost a negative cash flow in your general fund. The general fund operating budget this year pays for your police, your fire, your parks, and all the other services. The city asked for funding and support, and we've offered it, and we've agreed to it. I don't know what more I could say tonight.
Excuse me. Can you please be respectful as he was to you when you were speaking? This is his time now. Thank you.
I really don't know what more we could say tonight. Almost all of the comments or concerns have been addressed in those additional operating conditions that we've agreed to, that Greenlaw, I should say, has agreed to. They're in your development agreement. They weren't in at the last meeting, but these were new ones proposed by the Lark Ellen property owner and attorney that addressed lighting, traffic, the driveways on Baddillo and on San Bernardino Road. They wanted a 12-foot block wall, which is extraordinary. We've agreed to that. All other impacts are so, and I'm not going to use the word insignificant anymore, but in the terms of traffic, traffic volume measurements, when you look at percentages, any increase, again, less than 2% increase on the total volume in an intersection in peak hours is not considered significant for planning and transportation purposes under the laws. These traffic impacts were in the 1% range, which in most cities aren't even included in an environmental study because they're not considered reliably measurable because they are infinitesimally small, not insignificant, but small. The project overall, we need your support tonight. We need to move on to the city councils. I stressed at the last meeting, I apologize, but we've been at this for months. Public notices went out in August, sorry, in July, and they were mailed to all property owners within 300 feet and residents as well. 300 feet, that's been addressed here, is a state requirement. State of California mandates that number as a minimum. The city of West Covina uses that, as do most every other city we work with. 300 feet encompass people on both sides of Baddillo, I'm sorry, both sides of Elginia, south of Baddillo, the condominiums on the north side of San Bernardino Road because it's blind to the city boundaries. It's 300 feet from the exterior boundaries of that property. So the residents on the north side, be they a renter or an owner, were all notified. Lark Ellen were notified as well. And I totally understand those here tonight, speaking on their topic, and they're passionate about it. I'm passionate about the fact that there are not a large number of people who are directly affected by this who are here. I didn't hear a single person on Elginia who backs up to Baddillo. That was one of our great concerns. We've heard them tonight from Lark Ellen, I believe we have the manager and one resident. We had two other residents in Lark Ellen call Greenlaw Partners and ask about job opportunities. So, yes, people have concerns, but in the big picture of this, in our opinion, this project is not something that's damaging to the community. It has overall community benefits. And these are benefits that you will have when this church moves out, because the church is selling, it's moving out, and you have the opportunity to attract, and you have attracted, one of the largest, if not the largest, businesses in the United States. That's a positive. Regardless of your opinion, it's a positive that you'll have a business here that isn't going to be here one year and irresponsibly move out and leave this property in poor condition. This is a business that has a responsibility to abide by the conditions. And your zoning code and most everything that was mentioned tonight is a possibility that could go wrong is in your code book. Your municipal code has requirements that businesses can't have noise impacts on neighbors. You can't be damaging the health, safety, and welfare of a community. Your police department enforces public disorders. I mean, you've got multiple, multiple codes. So I've heard the need to have more operating conditions in there, but I can probably find in your city municipal code book, probably a regulation uncovers almost everything here tonight that's currently enforceable by the city, when and if the time comes they would ever need to. And I better be quiet and stop at this point, and thank you very much for everything. We ask that you please move this forward tonight to the city council on the 19th. Thank you very much.
Before I close public hearing, does the planning commission have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Hang?
No, not at this time.
Vice Chair Lewis?
No, not at this time. Vice Chair Lewis?
At most. And so I, I can't, I can't advise, I couldn't advise the city council to do that here. So my, my issue that I see is how, how can, how can I rectify that? And I think that's the big issue, is if, if you're telling me, oh, it shall not exceed 914 vehicle trips per day, fine. You know, not a big deal from my perspective. But if, if you're talking about, you know, 1,800, 2,000, 3,000, however many, and unfortunately, you don't know that because it's, Amazon's frankly job to know that. They don't, they're not providing that number. So I don't, I don't know how to rectify that and, and to address those concerns. So, I, I mean, from, from my perspective, if I were going to, if, if I were going to, to, to vote for something like this, I would say, I, I would say I would require that if there is more than a point, what is it? I think. 0.2. 0.2. 2%. VC increase, then I think there needs to be frankly some binding language in there that says, we have to mitigate that. And, and frankly, I don't think it can be something where it's mutually agreeable. I think it needs to be something where the city council has specific authority to say, no, it, it's, it's creating too much of an impact, and we need to put, we need to put that to an end. And so frankly, I think that's how it would need to be structured if that's, if that's something that, that frankly, I would look to approve. Because I, I think that that's, that's the inherent problem with this whole thing is that we're being presented not with, not with our numbers. This, these, these are the numbers that were presented to us. I mean, people talk about, oh, you know, I just got noticed or whatever about this project. Well, we just got this material literally last week. So it's not like we've had all of this stuff in front of us for months and months and months to consider. So I'm, I'm coming in here, taking, taking you at your word that, you know, it's 914 vehicle trips per day, but that's not what they're telling me. And they're also telling me, well, we'll agree to agree to something later. And that's the issue that I see. Sure. And so I don't know realistically, is there something that can be proposed to, to mitigate that concern?
And I have a comment on that, too, because of my background in disability access and other aspects of state law. But if I'm not mistaken, the California Fire Code gives the authority of the fire chief to appoint a marshal, fire marshal. And that fire marshal has the authority within his powers given to him by the state of California, and the fire chief of West Covina has the authority to ensure access routes and vehicles are in compliance with the state fire code. Is, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, did you want him to answer your question?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure I followed the, the fire marshal aspect of that, but I, yeah, I, I'd like an answer so that.
Yes.
Because frankly, the, the traffic mitigation aspect of things, I think, is, is the biggest concern that I see here.
Okay, absolutely. I would be happy to answer that. And I'm going to answer it as a former staff-type person that you see sitting over here, where I spent 36 years on these. As your advisor and recommending in that, what I'd recommend you do tonight, and I think it's appropriate, is you go through and you take your decision. Hopefully, you recommend approval of your general plan, your zone changer precise plan. The, obviously, you certify the MND, but when you get to the development agreement, that's an ordinance. You're recommending to the city council. In that action, you can move to approve, and you can also include a recommendation to the council to please include a cap that's concerned seasonal adjustment, whatever, be it something like a 0.02% increase in the level of service, that's called LOS, in any impacted intersection or some equivalent as the city council sees fit. So it addresses your concern. It tells the council. The council's going to make a final decision on an ordinance anyway, and there's a first reading and a second reading. It allows us to move forward tonight because, obviously, I, I can't come up with a final decision by tonight, standing here. And it's important to us to move on because of some restrictions we have on sales agreements. But I think that's a reasonable request, and, and your idea, quite frankly, is very good. The way it's worded, it's simplistic enough to where it's enforceable, but it also gives enough tolerance, I think, that would allow Amazon an unexpected, I call it surge. Surge during holidays, a surge when you have another pandemic. Who would have ever suspected this past one? Amazon was deemed as an essential services business. So that gives the council some flexibility. It addresses your concerns, and there's something there that's measurable. Now, obviously, I haven't discussed this with Amazon or Green Law Partners, but I think they would agree it's a reasonable recommendation from you and the commission to the council to address that. And by then, we'll have good answers as well and go from there, but thank you.
And I, I had, I had a couple of.
What was your recommendation? Sorry, so I could write it down.
Oh, it, it just deals with the, the, the need for frankly specificity with regard to the 914 trips, and to the extent that it exceeds 914 trips.
Sure.
It should not exceed 0.02% VC. Okay.
And may I recommend, your city attorney is sitting right here. You can ask those questions about it, the process for her.
Oh, that's, that's fine. Really, what I, what I, what I want to, what I, what I also want to, what I also want to get a sense of is, why in this iteration of the proposed agreement are we talking about a 20-year agreement as opposed to a 10-year agreement?
Are we or are we not?
Why do we have a 20-year proposed agreement in front of us as opposed to a 10-year agreement? Because the, the economic impact payments or mitigation payments are set to expire after 10 years, not 20.
I'm not aware of that. To our knowledge, everything was a 10-year. So I don't know whether it's a typographic layer or.
Page three of 13.
Vice Chair Lewis, it's always been a 20-year agreement.
Say that again?
It was always a 20-year agreement.
It was always a 20-year agreement?
So it is a 20-year agreement with 10 years of financial support.
I believe we heard it was a 10-year, excuse me, excuse me, we're, we're still conducting business. I, I believe we heard that it was a 10-year lease to Amazon.
It's a 10-year lease, but typical development agreements in the state of California run 20 years for the city's benefit. So the operating conditions will continue in place. All other aspects, it's just the one component of public benefits. Instead of all being paid upfront, the city asked for the annual payments. So the annual payments for 10 years is what was agreed upon by the city as part of that process. But the benefit payments only for the 10-year, but the enforceable action of the entire agreement is 20 if Amazon stays beyond their 10-year lease. That helps.
This is the first time that I heard that it's a 10, a, a 20-year lease. I thought it's all this time it was the 10-year lease.
Everything from our standpoint is a 10-year agreement, but the city's template that they use, they use a 10-year enforceable. So if for any reason there's an extension, I presume the city still has some control over the property.
So with the options of extensions, will the city get that extra $10 million for the second half of the 20 years?
Well, that, that would be the city council's discretion. But just to clarify, are you fine that if, if there was language recommended to the city council saying something as to in 10 years, the city of West Covina will have a chance to renegotiate a proposed, a, a proposed agreement for the, going forward to some sort, to some effect to that? This, it still has to go to the city council, and the city council is the final decision, but.
Please, we are conducting business.
So it, it's.
Certainly, whatever you wish to recommend to the council, we'll be happy to consider it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so that is all the questions we have. At this time, we'll close public hearing and commence the commission discussion.
Chair.
Right.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Chair.
Before the, before commissioner discussion begins, I just wanted to point out that on page 36 of the traffic, traffic impact analysis from the ISMND, it talks about E, peak season operation, and it states that no more than 125 vans will, will, in addition to the 914 trips, will, will be, will be added during peak season operation. And that's 56 truck, also 56 truck trips, and no more than 125 associates will be hired during peak season. So if that's something that you would like to consider adding, that's also an option. That's already identified in.
I don't think we have that page. I don't see it on which.
It was, it was in your, in your, in your flash drive.
It was in the traffic study.
Oh, from last week's. I don't have that.
Yeah, so what she's suggesting is that the study looked at facing certain caps at seasonal between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
So that's already been in place, is what you're saying?
Right, but what she's saying is.
Limits have already been in place.
Actually add it to with, to actually include that information into that development agreement.
Joanne, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, um, yes, the, if the planning commission wanted to, and this is already reflected in the tra, the traffic's impact analysis. It states that during peak season, no more than 125 vans, in addition to what they, what they already studied, will be added no more than 56 line haul truck trips. That's going in and out both ways. And no more than 125 associates will be hired during, during the peak season. That's in addition to the, to the off-peak season that's already been studied or included in the study.
So that's a small percentage that they're allowing for peak season?
And all parking would have to be done onsite. They would not be able to park offsite.
Does that come within the 0.02 that you were talking about increase?
I, I, I don't, I'm not exactly sure.
I don't know that it does.
We can pull it, we can, I can show it in the computer here, so.
Is Jana, where's Jana? She can verify that. 0.02.
Joanne, so just so, just so I'm clear, in that, in that language there, that would mean that you're talking about a, a total of, what is it? 35 total trucks going in and out on a, on a daily basis for, for peak season?
120 vans and 56 trucks.
Trucks and 125 associates.
So, sorry, 20, so 28 plus, plus 14.
I'm sorry, is 120 vans?
22 total trucks per day. Is that what, what we would be talking about?
Right now, you have 14 trucks going in and 14 exiting for a total of 28.
Right.
In their peak season operations that they included in the traffic study, they said that the line haul trucks would be twice as many. So then, if you go 28 times 2 is 56. So then it'd be 28 coming in, 28 exiting.
Okay, so it's not, it's not. It's not in addition to, it's, it's total.
Well, right now, you have 28, so you'd have to add 28 plus 28, so then the total would be.
So total 28 trucks coming in and out on a daily basis.
Yes, during the peak season, yes. Because you have to remember these numbers, the 914 is half coming in, half leaving.
Right. Sound address.
Is that all?
Would I address the 0.2?
0.2.
0.2, right.
Yeah.
If I can quantify it. 0.2 is totally different than percent of vehicles. 0.2 is vehicle over capacity. So it's a percentage at an intersection. And when you're, you're calculating the impacts of an intersection, you look at the critical movements, and you add up all the critical movement percentages, and that's how you get the V over C rate. If that is increased by more than 0.02, then it's impact. If you look at the off-peak tables for level of service, all the intersections were As and Bs. So you figure during the peak, if it's off, off-peak still and not during the peak season, that it's unlikely that an intersection will go from A to F or E.
Even though the number 0.02 is minuscule, it really matters how many trucks. I think we understand that better than percentages. So that is already implemented in the agreement for those amount of trucks and vehicles during peak season, correct?
No, that's what Joanne was suggesting, since that's something that was already identified in the.
Okay, I thought she had sent it, said it was already included. Joanne, is it already included?
It's not included in the development agreement currently, but it's something that the planning commission may recommend to add. And I also highlighted these statements in the traffic impact study.
Okay.
So, Jana?
Yes.
Can you explain? How, how would you conceivably consider the, the increase in, in vehicle trips relative to that, to that VC number? Is, is that something that, is that something that there's an easy formulaic translation for that as it pertains to this, this type of development?
Yeah, I don't think you can compare the two. You can't, I don't think you're going to be able to base the increase on V over C.
Sure, so what, what, would that, so, but we couldn't do that with vehicle, vehicle miles traveled either. So how, how would you, how would you measure that impact? You would just independently say that, that if there was a V over, a V over C increase of 0.2 in any of the adjoining intersections, that would be cause for, for, for mitigation response?
You could either do it that way, or you have the cap of they can only have this amount of vehicles. And that's why we're doing the driveway count. So it's not just one driveway, it's all the driveways over several days. Then you know that how many people are actually coming in and out. And if they exceed that, then you can put some kind of a, you know, I think Joanne has something, but you could put something on them that they have to, there's some penalty if they go over that max. But for the intersections, if you wanted to say V over C, you would have to have another whole traffic study looking at it.
Right, so that's what I was saying, we're better off just doubling the amount of trips.
It'd be easier just to, each year, I think.
Not to exceed.
Traffic count at the driveways. And our company has done that for several other large industrial sites. our company has done that for several other large industrial sites that are near the airport type of thing, that they can only go so far, and then they confirm with an independent source. So it's not Amazon's people, it's the city hires someone, and they do the count, and they report back what the numbers are.
So we could always just add that language, and then it can be reviewed by the city council once it goes to the city council, right?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams? I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes, yes, yeah, I have some comments. You know, we would love, you know, in the end of the day, we have to understand that the seller is selling the property, and it is within their rights under the California Constitution, the US Constitution, that they have the right to sell their property. And a city doesn't have the right to interfere in that process. And, I mean, we would all love to have that church continue to stay, but that is not the case. Housing, developers in housing, that costs thousands and millions and millions, and sometimes billions of dollars to develop housing into undeveloped areas. When it comes to more police officers, I'm proud to say that the majority of the city council, all four members, voted to increase police officers in our community when it comes to, you know, it's great to know that over $600,000 is going into building an additional 12-feet wall that's going to go along the apartment complex. It's hard for me to know that the residents in the surrounding communities have been heard, because state-of-the-art lights that are adjusted to benefit the community and ensuring that light doesn't go over into outside areas to disturb the beautification of our city. It's great to know that prohibited smoking is occurring there. It's great to know that there's employee incentives, over 400 new jobs, and you combine all the different job categories that this facility will house. It's great to know that over 400 new jobs will be created. There's multiple employee benefits, and it's great to know that the building is being remodeled from the ground up. It brings value to local businesses, and I know the local businesses I've spoken to around there are embracing the idea of having a complex like this in our community. And I believe that by having a remodeled location there, right next door to an intercommercial zoning where Home Depot's at and all the retail stores over there is located at, that's going to bring a tremendous amount of value to our local homeowners there. And in the end of the day, I am also proud to know that the developer is committing $4 million in the community grant to give back to our city. It's great to know that because of the majority, our city has decreased in a budget deficit, and our budget is balanced, and that we are balancing our budgets, and we continue to be one of the only cities to continue to have our own fire department and our own police department, because our majority of the city council has been able to balance the budget effectively. And the state's most recent report proved that, that based upon the findings, that our city was being more efficient and more accountable under the leadership. And so, in my end of my comments, I thank Greenlaw Partners and Amazon for believing in our community and wanting to give back to our community, and that's my comments.
Commissioner Williams?
Okay, I agree with what Joanne Burns, our planning manager, was suggesting to add that language, and it also specified with the additional vehicles as well as associates onsite, that they would have to also ensure that they do off-street parking on their business location. Because I think at the last meeting, it was described that during their seasonal peak time, that some of those communities that had those facilities found that people were parking off from the site of the business.
That's it. Commissioner Heng?
I guess tonight, the two main items that I previously talked or touched about in a little bit is regarding the general plan amendment for this particular zone, which is 21 acres, and also the zoning change. I know we touched about it in the past, that it was used, it was at some manufacturing sites for larger company in the past that was, you know, in the 50s, the 60s, and then, but however, the community has enjoyed the zone change since the church took over, and that's been, I believe, 30 or some odd years right now. And it seems like we are, yes, it was used at that time for zoning purposes, that the manufacturer was needed at that time, but we still don't, despite the fact that whatever manufacturing, it's not all that, you know, when you think of manufacturing, it's dusty, noisy, what have you, but if an aerospace industry sometime is just not as loud and noisy and what have you, but we don't have that right now. I'm not comfortable with the zone change. I mean, I noticed that certain areas, for example, in the Covina area, the downtown area, a lot of manufacturing was there, even with the last five, 10 years. However, they upgraded and it's changed, and it changed more toward, you know, they built more complexes, apartment units, and it's really nice down there. Versus this community right here, I do have a concern, concern whether the general plan amendments change, which is changing, not so much to help or keep and sustain the neighborhood the way it is as of today, and the zone change. The zone change that we're not changing, we're not changing for to match the community. However, at this point in time, land use are constantly at change, meaning that there are times that we have to, whether it's, it can't sit there vacant forever. And unfortunately, the cities don't have, own the land per se that we can actually gear toward in a certain development. The only thing that we have is that if a developer came, we have to take considerations and put certain type of mitigations to help with the neighbors in that area. And also, I'm happy to hear that Amazon is working with one of the neighbors, the apartment units, to prevent the walls, making the light tires and what have you. I'm also like to see that that particular area, in terms of which the language, I believe it's not in there, I don't know for sure, if you can add the operation hours. They said between 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., that there's not going to be a lot of van movement in that area. If that is the case, in the development and the development agreement, perhaps we can add that in there. For the 10 years, in terms of all this time, that I thought it was a 10-years lease agreement, I thought it was only 10 years, however, it's not, it's 20 years. Perhaps we can ask and put in the agreed, or add on to the development agreement, to see if we can actually ask for, this is recommendation to the city council, perhaps to see if we can add on and ask to see if we can get some more, what do you call that, revenues, tax money? I mean, the second half, perhaps we can add to it. I'm not sure what the city council, some of the city council are listening tonight, so perhaps they can listen and take that into consideration as well. So, but it is, it is, I'm hearing all the neighbors, and I'm hearing all the Amazon as well, businesses, people, there are some neighbors that do want the job, the closest to it, however, the impact is tremendous as well. If we can limit, and if Amazon is truly operating as what they're saying, as a US post office or as a, I mean, I don't know how that operation works, but as a, like a post office delivery, that if that is the case, and they're trying to operate off our, perhaps between the 10:00 a.m. to the 10:00 p.m., at least keep the neighborhood a little bit quieter with just the few trucks that has to come in at a certain times. So, there's a lot more. I hope that the city council would take all those into considerations, because this is not just a one-day change, it's a 20-year landzone change in use that we are taking into consideration. And the decisions that we're making, it's impacting the whole neighborhood for the 20 years, whether it's providing jobs for the next 20 years, or, you know, hopefully it would improve the neighbors somehow, with added, and I hope other planning commissions have added some other items that is not in the agreement, development agreement, perhaps you can add that on to it. I think that's all I have.
Vice Chair Lewis?
So I have a quick question for staff with regard to the zone change request. What could go in as a matter of right, let's say, in the event that an M1 zone change is implemented, and Amazon subsequently says this site's no longer suitable for our use, what could be put in there as a matter of right?
I'll let Joanne answer that question.
Light manufacturing, the parcel, another parcel delivery station would also be allowed by right.
So light manufacturing, what does that entail?
I can go ahead and pull up the code section on the projector, you would exactly see the list of uses that are allowed.
And just to clarify, if Amazon wants to move out in 10 years, a new tenant that Greenlaw rented out to or leases to will have to go through the same process as Amazon's going to do right now, right?
No.
So if they pull, if they pull, anyone pulls a license after 10 years, anyone can move in?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Gutierrez, what was your question?
So, and let's just say hypothetically, Amazon doesn't want to renew its contract in 10 years. When that 10 years passes, and let's just say there's a vacant building that Greenlaw Partners owns, if they were to lease it out to another major tenant, would that have to get city notification?
No, they're entitled to that forever.
So they'd only have business license?
They would need a business license, if it's a new business operator or owner. But as far as the entitlements, depending on when they move in, so if they leave the building vacant, I believe it's over six months, depending on the type of use that comes in, they may require additional entitlements from the city.
Zoning would not change, though.
Yeah.
But we've, Pauline had pulled up the permitted uses, so these would be the uses by right?
Joanne has them up. So they include agriculture, industrial, aircraft factories, assembly, automobile assembly, bakeries, industrial wholesale, battery rebuilding, blacksmith shops, body and fender works, breweries and distilleries, bottling plants, carpet cleaning plants, dairy products manufacturer, creameries, just a couple of the items that could go in there.
I'll go ahead and slowly scroll.
Let me ask you this, though. If we added the hours regarding 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in terms of business hours, and if they change it, 10 years from now, Amazon's not going to be there? If it's a manufacturing, one of the manufacturing lists I saw was manufacturing automobile, I forgot what it was.
There'd have to be one big manufacturer to take that building, I mean, let's be realistic. Bakery's not going in there.
Correct. Correct. So the operation hour will remain, like 10 to 10?
24-hour operation.
Amazon. 24 hours as well?
So, so just to clarify, if someone, if there was a motion to an effect to, in the event Amazon does not renew in 10 years, the city of West Covina will have the right to review the applicant CUP?
Don't have a CUP.
Or permit use?
It would really depend on the use that they're proposing. If it's within the M1 categories, they would not require a conditional use permit.
Maybe we can put that in there. Can we? No?
Can we recommend to the city council that tonight, if we wanted to?
No. Can we, can we give Amazon certain things besides changing the zoning? Is that a possibility?
No, they already explained in the staff report that the city had changed the zone as well as the general plan designation when they allowed faith community church to go in. So what Amazon is asking for now is for the city to allow them to change the zone and do a general plan amendment for M1 so that they can put in their operation. When it comes to a zone change and a general plan amendment, once you approve that, that runs with the land until either someone else approaches the city and either asks for change.
I understand that. Thank you for the explanation.
We cannot stop the church from selling this property. The fact that they're selling it to someone who is solely requiring an M1.
Yeah, I mean, we were all, I would love a Catholic church to move there, but they're not moving there. But, so we have to make a recommendation that tells the city council what we're recommending, but at the same time, I'm Catholic, and I would love a Catholic church to be there, but they're not moving there. And we have to also remember, I think, an important thing, I know your background in business, Sheena, you'll know that.
Vice Chair, did you already get your answers that you were requesting?
So, so I guess the, I guess the question would be whether or not restrictions imposed in the development agreement would be sufficient to protect the city's interests in, quite frankly, preventing something that is unlikely to go in there to begin with, given the current state of affairs. I'm not really too sure that we could do that in any way. I think that that's the issue that I see with regard to changing from the current zoning to something else. So, I don't know, I think that sort of bifurcates my viewpoint on the issue.
Anything else? Any comments you have?
In that case. I said the last meeting that regarding traffic, the church had a lot of traffic. You just only saw it one day a week, mostly. They had the school there, they had an elementary, junior high, preschool, nursery, they had several different counseling services in and out of there, over 10,000 in attending weekly for the services. That's 833 families in and out, cars in and out, so not to mention from the school. So, I, you know, I am a big believer in supporting your small businesses, your local businesses. There are some things that, you know, I have to order from Amazon, and, you know, we all do. So, that being said, do we have a motion?
Are you going to say any more comments, Lewis? No? Okay. In that case, I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the City of West Covina, California, recommending to the city council certification of the mitigated negative declaration of a matter of rental impact. General Plan Amendment Number 20-03, Zone Change Number 20-04, Precise Plan Number 20-08, Tentative Parcel Map Number 83444, Tree Removal Permit Number 21-12, Development Agreement Number 21-01, with the following, an additional recommendation as outlined by Joanne. Joanne, can you say the comment you made earlier, so I can add that to my motion in regards to over exceeding the limit?
Commissioner Gutierrez, so it'd be to amend section, I believe, 11CI to include the peak season figures, and we'll work with the attorney.
And then I make that motion to integrate Commissioner Lewis's. And, and then I make that motion to integrate Commissioner Lewis's comments, and that's my motion.
Sorry, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Do you have a revised development agreement with the additional changes, the implementation conditions, that 11b that Green Law, I believe, is okay with and pursuing in addressing the Lark Ellen comment? So, would we be approving that version with the change to section 11(c)(i)?
Great, and that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
If, if I could, I'm, I'm, I'm not thrilled with, with, with all of the, the aspects of this particular project, but to the extent that we can, to, to the extent that this goes to city council, which inevitably will, inevitably it will, whether we deny it or accept it, it inevitably will go to the city council, and that's the, that's the reality of the situation. And so, to that end, my position is regardless of the imperfections of this project, I think that it would be incumbent upon me to try to, try to add reasonable restrictions and additions to the proposed agreement that I think are in the best interest of the city to the extent that the city council decides to adopt this. So, I would, I would go ahead and, and include that, a recommendation that if allowable trips under the proposed agreement are exceeded, the city, or I, I'm, I'm recommending that the proposed agreement be modified such that the city would be able to impose a penalty and, and impose injunctive relief upon the operator of the, of the site, a restriction on drone usage on the site. I would also, I would also recommend that the city council, as part of the development agreement, move the van queue away from the Lark Ellen property that is immediately adjacent, such that it is not one parking space away, but three parking spaces away, and, and another I would also include...
Sorry, Vice Chair Lewis, is that on Vidilla or?
On the, so I guess that would technically be the side closest to Lark Ellen, such that, the, the...
Departments for the 12...
Correct, so, so that, so that vehicles are not sitting there close, close by that particular complex, notwithstanding the fact that there would be a sizable wall there. I, I would, I would further recommend that the city council, to the extent that the, the agreement is set forth is 20 years and only contains compensation for 10 years, should only be for 10 years. If it's for 20 years, it should have compensation for 20 years as well. With, with regard to, with regard to operators, or, excuse me, with regard to the operator, the operator should provide information directly to the city of West Covina pertaining to all consultants, contractors, and self-employed drivers who would otherwise need a business license, such that we do not have to be the enforcement mechanism for that, we have the information so that we can enforce it. I, I was going to second the, the concerns over operational hour limits. I'm going to suggest that the, that the city council adopt appropriate hour, hours of operation limitations, whether that be 10 to, 10 to 10, or, or whether that be some different timeframe that is, that is appropriate and congruent with the, the business going on there. I think, I think there should be some limitations. I would also want to limit vehicle idling on the site, such that that's not a concern for residents who are immediately adjacent or not. And that would be what I would recommend and would, would want to see included in any motion.
So, will you want a space between the, the wall they're building, the trophy wall?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, I would like to integrate Commissioner Lewis's comments into my motion, and that's my motion.
I'll second, however, I, I would want to bifurcate the vote on the issues of the general plan amendment and the zone change.
We'll, we'll do them individually.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-0693. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
This is, this is for which portion?
The negative declaration of environmental impact.
Is, is this just for the declaration of environmental impact, or is this for the general plan amendment?
Just for the neg.
Okay, aye.
And Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes 5/0. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-6094, approving the general plan amendment number 20-03. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
No.
Vice Chair Lewis?
No.
Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes 3/2. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-6095, approving zone change number 20-04. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
No.
Vice Chair Lewis?
No.
And Commissioner Becerra, oh, sorry, Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes 3/2. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-6096, approving precise plan number 20-48, entry removal permit number 21-12. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang? Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes 5/0. I have a motion and a second to approve tentative parcel map 21-6097. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes 5/0. All right, so, I have a motion and a second to approve the development agreement dash, number 21-01, resolution number 21-6098. It would be the amended development agreement with the additional modifications to section 11(c)(1) to add the peak season trip counts. And then, make sure I got these right, if exceeded, the city would impose a penalty or an injunction to add a condition...
Or, or be, or be provided with, with the option to seek injunctive relief.
Okay. Or option to seek injunction relief. To add a condition, no drone usage condition, move van queue away from Lark Ellen at minimum three parking spaces, reduce to 10 years to match the, these number of years in compensation. Operators should provide the city with the information regarding their consultants or drivers, so that we can ensure business license compliance. Adapt appropriate business hour operations in the development agreement, and then limit the vehicle idling. Okay, so I have a motion, sorry, so, shall we, Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Oh, we need a clarification.
Excuse me, I need a clarification. On the discussion about limiting activity was regarding the van after hours, after 10 p.m., activity in the van lot?
Correct.
And I don't want people to think that we're talking about...
Right, not...
You're not, you're not talking about a total limitation on the B47 operation, right? It's simply the activity in the, in the designated van lot. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And then Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes 5/0.
Final action on this matter will be taken at a public hearing before the city council at, on a date to be determined. I believe we already have that date.
And I would like to thank Green Law Partners for choosing the city of West Covina, and Amazon, and, once again, this will be taken up at the city council meeting, but thank you for choosing the residents of West Covina, thank you.
Commission, commission reports and miscellaneous items, would any of the commissioners like to report are common on any item? No? I can't hear you. Pauline, are there any items to report to the commission?
I just wanted to remind everyone, our state of the city is next Thursday, October 14th, at the Sportsplex at 6:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale, the information can be found on the city website.
Were there any actions taken by the city council that pertain to the planning commission?
The second hearing for the, a second hearing in adoption of the ordinance number 2487, the zone change number 2101, and code amendment number 21-01, the Auto Plaza Zone will be read at tomorrow's city council meeting.
Okay, so, since there's no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned.